All right. Onto some more stuff about the PD. Cheerson's got me there, thank you. So as you folks have heard me talk about before is Kalia. And Kalia is what we, the gold standard in policing. Last week, members of the command staff, as you see here, we had to go down to Jacksonville for our week-long training and our hearing. The hearing is what we have to sit in front of like you folks. We're examined and interviewed by many members of this commission. And they review our policies and best practices. Every four years, we have to be inspected, if you would. So back in June, the Kalia Commission sent a commissioner to our agency to go over all of our policies, interview people. And now we have to go there in person, as you see here, and be interviewed. Our hearing was on Saturday morning. As you know from my prior explanation, there's 18,000 law enforcement agencies in the United States. 1,100 of them are Kalia-recognized across the United States, Canada, and Mexico. 1,100. Your town, your police department, is one of 1,100 in the nation. Humble brag, as I've said before. When we were inspected and interviewed, they had mentioned to us that we come out in the top 5% of that, based on our assessment and their policies. And we had one error, one. And it's embarrassing to say it, but we missed a word in a policy. And they caught it. So we fixed that word, and we are in compliance for another four years. So as you will see here, this is what this looks like. They break up the United States into committees and regions. And those regions get interviewed. And this one was us on Saturday morning. We did not get the fortunate chance to have Johnson, Rhode Island, go first because something went awry there. So they said, "You guys are going first." So we had to pony up and get up front. The next thing you'll see here, which we would go in, oh, this is, all right, this is us leaving. Like, man, four years under the gun, and we couldn't power walk out of there fast enough to get back home. So that was us skedaling out of the hotel. And this is the hearing. So as you see there, we have Lieutenant Ryan Bueker. He's our accreditation manager. Bill Pease, he's our assistant accreditation manager. Deputy Chief Jason Breen, Captain Jason Tuftel, Captain Elvin Bentoncourt, and Captain Timothy O'Donohue. And the reason why we all went together on this is because we are trying to display that the importance of Kalia in our organization, in our community. We don't have to do this every year, once every four, for the big one. It is so important to recognize that because they watch us, as do the new generation of police, they watch us. And if we're asking them to adhere to these policies and procedures and live by this gold standard, we should too. So we found it was important for us to achieve this milestone, to all go there and speak and be interviewed. So I would like to just read this brief letter we got today from the commission. "Chief Bernard, Kalia accreditation serves as the international gold standard for public safety agencies. This correspondence serves to recognize the Londonderry Police Department has been awarded law enforcement accreditation effective November 15, 2025. This award remains in effect for four years, and the agency retains all privileges associated with this status during that period. The process of Kalia accreditation begins with a rigorous self-assessment, requiring reviews of policies and practices and processes against internal accepted public safety standards. This is followed with an assessment by independent assessors with significant public safety experience. Additionally, public feedback is received to promote community trust and engagement. Structured interviews are conducted with select agency personnel and others with knowledge to assess the agency's effectiveness in overall service, deliveries, and capabilities. The decision to accredit is rendered by the governing body of 21 commissioners following a public hearing and review of reporting and documentation. Kalia accreditation is a continuous process and serves as the foundation for a successful, well-managed, transparent, community-focused-based safety agency. And to this end, an agency must maintain its accreditation status by remaining in compliance with Kalia standards at all times. Kalia congratulates the Londonderry Police Department for demonstrating a commitment to professional excellence through accreditation. Kalia accreditation is a mark of professional excellence, and it should be displayed proudly for all of those in honor." That is what we concluded. So I felt that was important today to share that with you all, to let you know what this means to us as an organization, as town councilors, as budg, community members, more so as residents. So thank you for allowing us to follow this gold standard and to lead many agencies across the United States with that seal. We're going to be upgrading our letterhead and our seal, putting that on there to proudly display that in the next coming weeks. So with that, the last thing I have is an update about body-worn cameras. So I always had been asked in the past where we're at. Training's been done internally with the people who are going to be rolling these things out. We've had one officer out there, training with it to get us all the feedback, to start showing the personnel. And this should be running out in the first week of December. We will have Londonderry's Body-Worn Camera Program up and running. As you folks know, we've never had this before. It's a long time coming. And I will just reiterate it again, as I do to our staff. It's not because I don't trust our people. We hire the right people. They're human. They're gonna make mistakes. I believe in this program because it protects our people from false claims, erroneous allegations, whatever you want to call it. And we want to highlight the good that we can capture, too. So this is more for them than it is for anybody. And it also reinforces any of this transparency that people think that maybe we're not giving them. When something comes up that's really important, we're going to share it. If we make a mistake, we're going to own it. And I just want you guys to know that this is the first step to getting there. So that'll be rolling out really soon. If anybody has any questions when the time comes on that, by all means, we all know how to find me. Just don't call 911 to find me. Call me, text me, or show up, and I'd be happy to help. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening. Have a great night.
Sir, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great news all around.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Welcome. The presentation of the Boston Post-Kane has been postponed to December 1st. I will open public comment. Good evening.
Good evening. Clarissa Navarro, 2 Woodbine Drive. So I'm here tonight to address the selection of new volunteers for the planning board. I understand that some of the individuals who previously served, such as former planning board and town council member John Farrell, are interested in returning. While I appreciate their past service, I respectfully ask the council to give strong consideration to applicants who are committed to pausing further development for a set period of time, as well as those who have not previously served on the board. Fresh perspectives and new ideas are essential to guide our town's future. Regarding growth, I'd also like to point out that several major projects have already been approved but have not yet begun. I know the town manager is actively working on road concerns, but there are many other additional issues that we need to evaluate and address before taking on any new development. I'm not saying that we should never have any development, but I would very much like the planning board and the town council to work together to make sure that the growth that we've already okayed gets finished. The things that we need to do to make the town capable of all of these people needs to be done before any new planning starts. We need new people, again, and we need new ideas. I would also like to see the ADU requirements incorporated into the larger conversation about growth. I don't oppose them outright, but I do have concerns about potential impacts on neighboring properties. Like, I can tell you right now, if somebody built a two-story house next to my property, looking into my backyard, I'm not going to be happy about that. That's not why I moved to Londonderry. That's not what I want. I did look on the town website to see what standards, if any, have been done. I couldn't find anything other than the permit. So I did, I do have a call, and I'm waiting for some additional information to see what it is. But all of that needs to be considered as well when you're looking at growth, because if you have 1,000 houses with 1,000 ADUs, I mean, that's growth that needs to be counted as a separate house, not as an ADU, because these are people, kids, whatever, that are going in there. So I think that is an issue as well. I do hope you guys will consider what these concerns are. I'm not the only person in Londonderry that's been concerned about the unfettered growth that we've seen. I know I'm not the only one that is unhappy with the situation on our roadways. So I think it's very important for everyone to really look at what this is and make sure that when you're interviewing the town planning people, that they align with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have public comment? Good evening, Martha. How are you?
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Martha Smith, 38 Chastor Drive. And what I wanted to say, similar to what Ms. Navarro just said, that we have a program that we've been running in Londonderry for, I don't know how many years now. I know I went through it. It's called Londonderry Leadership. And the program is to introduce people in town who either lived here a long time or new to Londonderry about the town operations, the various departments, the various boards. And I really think that when people are applying for these boards that have gone through that Londonderry leadership program, I think that you should give some priority to those people. They've obviously come, they've obviously have an interest in the town, and I would, I believe fresh voices are a nice thing, too. And to give these people an opportunity, if they're willing to come forward and serve, I know a couple of people have told me they went through the program and are now stepping forward, and I think they deserve a little priority in your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, Rick. How are you tonight?
Good evening, Ron. Good evening, everybody. My name is Rick Olson. I'm the president of Londonderry Fishing Game Club. I reside in Manchester, former Londonderry resident as a kid. I just recently saw the list of folks that are being nominated for the planning board, and my only comment is, I don't think, generally speaking, we, anybody has an idea of, you know, what the process, is there an interview process, or do you just select people that you know? For example, you know, I mean, do you interview them? You know, what is a planning board? What is the function of the planning board? What is the planning board's role? Are you aware that it is a, in fact, quasi-judicial board, making decisions that have legal ramifications? And the second piece of that is, when you do select folks from the planning board, okay, what kind of oversight are you, as the councilors, doing, I guess is another question that a lot of folks have. Specifically, there's a plethora of training out there that's available to people that are going to sit on a planning board. For example, the, there's webinars out there, online self-paced modules, workshops, conferences, business and economic development affairs for the state. They put on a planning board, they put out a planning board handbook, and they even have a test where you can get a certificate. So the other thing, too, is, you know, there's, there's a lot of resources out there, and my question is, is do you actually ask candidates how much time they're going to spend digging into the resources to educate themselves on the planning process, whether they're going to be on the planning board or the ZBA? My biggest concern, you know, based on my own personal experiences, when we have a project at our facility, I think we come pretty organized. We hire engineers and soil scientists and biologists, and we do all of our due diligence even before we, you know, put into the planning board for a site, site plan review. And even then, we run into a few hiccups along the way. So it's not a perfect process. So I think it's super vitally important that we have the right people on the planning board. In other words, it's not a titular role. It's not a box-checking role. It's not, "Oh, I was on the planning board, you know, I checked that box." You have to have candidates that are willing to actually put in the work and actually learn what the functions and the duties are. And then lastly, I would say, are they temperamentally suited to be on that, that planning board? For example, if they have agendas, or, you know, if they got an axe to grind, or some scores to settle. You know, if you have a lengthy enough interview and vetting process, you can kind of find those things out. So I would just implore the council at some point in time, maybe put something together that educates the general public as to what your selection process is for those that come and seek to be on the planning board. That's really all I have to say today.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else have public comment? Good evening, Christine. How are you tonight?
Good evening, afternoon. Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I'd like to address and respond to some statements that have been made both publicly and online since the last town council meeting. First, quote, "We've heard you on property tax relief," end quote. And then, quote, "We moved forward a plan to give Londonderry $1 million in total savings to our taxpayers. Because of our actions Monday night, the municipal tax rate will be $3.53," end quote. Now, let's review the facts. Yes, three of the town councilors voted to take $200,000 from the unfunded balance. That is a saving of less than 3 cents. And yes, three of the town councillor members also, as part of the entire motion, directed the town manager to lower the budget by $400,000 at a tax rate deduction of roughly 5 cents. If it is accomplished. But at whose expense? What services will be cut because of that cut in $400,000? And if you cut it by $400,000, what is to stop the taxpayers at deliberative to putting it right back in? So there's no guaranteed savings there. Finally, the last $400,000 of this million dollars was taken from the upcoming warrant articles. The warrant articles that you will be voting on in March, and their tax impact will be next December. The monies that was applied to them from the unfunded balance to lower their tax impact next December was taken away from many of them, for a total of $400,000. So if you vote for those very needed warrant articles, the $400,000 you saved this year will be in your next year's tax bill. So where is the million dollars? $200,000 from the unfunded balance, $400,000 if the budget is lowered and passed, and $400,000 from these years, from these years, this year's warrant articles, if passed, that you will be paying for next year. Now, I know that the voting residents of Londonderry are not naive. They need facts, and it is insult to them that some of our town council attempt to mislead them. Shame on you, Councillor Dunn, Councillor Faber, and Councillor Coombs. Oh, and are the two of you up for reelection in March? Hmm. Robbing Peter to pay Paul is an insult to our intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment? Seeing that, I will close public comment.
Can I address that?
Let it go, or?
No. So I'd like to address your statement. So it wasn't 200 off the UFB, it was 600,000. We set the tax rate last Monday. The only time the tax rate can be lowered, the only time your bills can be lowered in December, is last meeting. There is no future time to use it. The only method to use it was to use UFB. Cutting spending will not lower your tax bill in December. That was the only method we had, so we did that. As far as the 400 in spending cuts, we are going to look for ways to do it without cutting services in any significant amount. We also, as to address the part about it's taken out of warrant articles, it's UFB. We can spend it on the front end, or we can spend it on the back end. On the back end, you have a choice. On the front end, if we decide for you what warrant articles we put it in, it's not your choice. And I find it ironic that someone wants to raise taxes who runs on lowering them on the people who need help in this town. Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have some boards and appointments and reappointments. First up, we have Kaylee Esposito interviewing for the Old Home Day Committee. Welcome. Do you want to say a few words, and then we'll see if the council has questions for you?
I do have a prepared note to read, but it's more so to the public rather than the council. I figured that it was, you know, going to be questions and then maybe the opportunity to read it.
Okay. So you want to read it at the end?
It's a little weird if, you know, I'm not even appointed to then read something or even considered for appointment if I'm...
So we're not appointing anybody tonight? Because we have to, it's only a candidate on December 1st, so we won't be appointing anybody tonight that we're going to talk to individuals tonight?
That's perfectly fine. I mean, even if not appointed, like, that's fine.
Okay. So do you want to read your statement, or do you want us to ask questions first?
I'd rather the questions first.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
Sure. How long have you been involved with the Old Home Day Committee?
I have been involved for the last three or four years, mostly either facilitating or helping facilitate the touch-a-truck events. I've helped, I volunteered with other events like the Color Run. I volunteered with the Lions to serve the beer one year. The list goes on. I don't know that I have everything on the top of my head, but that's about it.
Great. Any other questions?
What do you hope to get done with being on the, on the Old Home Day Committee?
Well, the intent of the Old Home Day Committee, from my understanding, is to transition this, and that's part of my note, so I could probably skip some of that, but to transfer this from, you know, town-run, very large event where it takes a lot of time and funds from staffing, and really, their normal duties. I mean, I know that things don't just stop because Old Home Day comes up. You know, the town still needs to run and do things. So transitioning this to a nonprofit, all, back to all-volunteer run is the intent. So I did apply for the one-year position with the intent that we would establish this. I mean, it quite literally is like flying an airplane without, you know, anything even established, where this is a new nonprofit trying to, again, transition this back to all volunteer. That's not an easy task to do. I'm very nervous about it, actually, especially given that there's only two of us right now on the list. That is very nerving for me. So really, just to establish something with a solid foundation that can be moved forward.
And I certainly hope that past people who've been on Old Home Day would be willing to lend a hand with a phone call if need be. If any of the new board members have a question or want help with something, I certainly hope that happens in the future.
I do hope so, and that's part of my plea.
Any other questions?
I myself would be happy to help if you have any trouble.
Just one question for me. Do you prefer the three-year, two-year, or one-year? Which do you prefer?
The one-year was what I had applied for.
Awesome.
Kaylee, I just want to say thank you for stepping up. I know you were involved in Old Home Day, and now that we're transitioning from, you know, having some staff involved to, you know, volunteers, I think it's great that you have some insight on it, and I appreciate you stepping forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I also want to thank Kaylee. Kaylee and I have worked on an event for the Green Team, and she helped us with a lot of the online, she's like a magic person on the computer. She knows how to get these people involved and engaged and registered and, well, we're all old on this. So she's the young person who can do all of that, and she, she's a great problem solver. So I, I think that this is wonderful to have a breath of fresh air.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Do you want to read your statement now?
Sure. So as many of you already know, I'm here tonight to be interviewed for one of these positions. I did apply for the one-year to help transition the process. The intent to save money for the town, which is clearly a big goal for a lot of taxpayers here. It'll also open up more of an opportunity for local businesses and organizations to receive tax credits that they may not just giving donations, well, now it's a nonprofit that they're able to kind of use that for their own advantage, too. So I'm hopeful that that will increase the involvement from the community, from all businesses in the community, any ones that are returning, anyone that's taken a break for whatever reasons, hoping that they return. As far as time goes, you know, especially not being appointed tonight until December, while I find that, you know, perfectly acceptable, that then means that this timeframe that I counted, it's, it's less than nine months as of today. It's, it's November 17th. If I'm not mistaken, it's August 16th is that big Saturday. So as of last week, that's nine months. I'm a mom, so nine months, that's actually the time we have left until Old Home Day is less than a pregnancy. So I just want to put that into perspective, okay? It goes very, very fast. And now, to count it starting December 1st or later, it is just, that is way, it's, it's time is now to start this stuff. So if anybody else has any interest in joining the board, anybody who said, "Oh, well, the deadline's passed," it's fine. It, I'm hoping it'll be reposted, and that anyone who's been on the fence will consider signing up, because two of us or one of us, two of us cannot do this by ourselves. We definitely need a full board and, and then some. We need the whole town to participate, businesses, organizations, churches, each individual, neighbors, friends. An hour for a volunteer slot, or to run a event, or to be on the board. I mean, there's so many different options for everybody to get involved. And just, my plea is not to wait for somebody else to say, to, you know, "Oh, I'll do it." That's, that's a big downfall in this community. It leaves it on a lot of our shoulders who step up and are here with all of our kids and all these events. It puts a lot on us who step up when everybody says, "Well, they can take care of it," or, you know, "Somebody else will do it." We really need help. So that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Up next, I have John Farrell, Planning Board. Good evening, sir.
Hello, all.
So do you want to do an opening statement, sir, and then we'll ask questions?
Sure. John Farrell, I've served on the planning board for 11 years. That does mean something. It knows, in my understanding, a quasi-judicial board, the rules, the regulations, the state regulations, the site plan regulations, and all of the governing pieces of the planning board is well-understood. Served a little while on the town council. I probably have attended hundreds of meetings, so I have a pretty good idea about how things work. The, it's always been an honor to serve in this community. This is a great community. It's the place where we live, it's the place where we raise our families, and I continue to want to be in the position to do this. I was asked by several people, you know, to bring my experience, and especially my historical knowledge. The historical knowledge that is... The historical knowledge that is sadly, you know, dying off in the community because we just all get older. So I'm open to your questions. I do want to just take a moment to thank the chairman and the vice chairman. I did have a close friend pass away this weekend. They were going to... I didn't know if I had to fly out today. Turns out I didn't have to. I can't be here on December 1st, so I thank you for your condolences and your kindness, and I appreciate it.
Any questions from the... Any questions?
I've got questions.
Okay. Dan?
So what do you see as issues with the Planning Board that needs to be addressed as our town is growing?
Could you please clarify that? What issues are you speaking of?
Do you see any issues that need to be addressed with the Planning Board, or do you think everything is just working fine the way it is?
Well, our regulations haven't been updated in 10 years, and that needs to be done first, and that needs to be proactively done.
So Londonderry currently has a developer that hires... They hire a company to do the drone traffic study if it's required. What are your thoughts of having the developer put the money in escrow with the town and have the town hire a company to do the traffic study?
I would need legal clarification on that. I don't know if the town actually has the ability to do that or not. If the legal clarification is that the town can do that, traffic studies have always been something of controversy in the town for many, many years, but I would need legal clarification to know whether or not that would be allowed.
How do you feel about preserving some of our property in the community from some of these developers?
Well, I was actually an original member of the Open Space Committee. That Open Space Committee preserved about $14 million worth of open space. Had we not preserved that open space as an original member of that committee, our build-out would have been 42,000 people. Since we preserved all the land that we could and anyone that was willing to sell to the town, our build-out stands around 32,000 or 33,000 people. So I think my record is pretty clear on open space. We bought everything everybody was willing to sell to us.
Okay. I bring this up because in 2010, the Conservation Commission came to the Town Council, which you were on, and they had agreed to purchase a parcel of land on Pillsbury Road at Gilchrist, owned by Andy Mack. Council at that time felt that $900,000 wasn't enough, was too much, actually, to buy for that property. And Pillsbury Realty actually closed on that property in September of '28, 2010, at just over a million, 1,050,000. And I bring that up because now this is part of the PUD, and you're going to have all kinds of houses up there that are going to be developed.
Well, the PUD did not exist in 2010.
Well, it's not part of that. So now it's becoming, you know, it's all going to be residential. So I bring that up because I just feel that if you were on the council, you could have preserved that property. From conversations I had with Mr. Mack when he was alive, it was a conversation, it was a agreement that Conscom had come through, agreed to. It was a pretty good agreement, 900,000, only to have, you know, a developer now put homes in there.
So what's your question?
That's my point.
So what's your question? I don't understand your question.
I just wanted to make a point, since you were on the council, all right, you could have prevented some of this development over there on Pillsbury.
All right, so since you brought it up, and I know the historical knowledge of it, at that time, they used the GIS system to map out that piece of land and what could be built and what couldn't be built. And after the analysis was done and brought back to the Town Council, the analysis said the land was only worth about $680,000, and we were willing to pay Mr. Mack $680,000. He decided not to sell it to the town, and that was after the experts went out and looked at the land and decided how much it was worth.
Let's talk about Gilchrist Road. Londonderry taxpayers voted 2003 for open space conservation easement for 1.23 million. Conservation was very important for the people in this community. We wanted to preserve that. Wasn't it your decision as a councillor to bring that warrant article forward to the taxpayers to remove that conservation easement and sell the property to, you know, so the developer could then build homes up there?
Counselor Bouchard, I know you're new. The councillors don't make decisions to do things. What they do is they put things to the warrant. The voters make the decision on what to do. An offer was made to the town, a warrant was put forward to the voters.
But as a councillor, it's your decision whether to bring that warrant forward, correct?
It's a decision of five councillors, councillor.
Okay. But you were one of those councillors, is what I'm saying.
What does that have to do with an appointment to the Planning Board?
Yeah, can we keep the line of questioning to Planning Board things, not things he's done as a town councillor?
Well, I think the things that he's done as Town Councillor does reflect his position that could be affected on the Planning Board. That's all I have to say at this point.
And I'm going to ask John's favorite question. Do you perceive any conflict of interest with you being, sitting on the Planning Board?
I have no conflict of interest. Anytime I had presented with a conflict of interest during my entire service, I took the time to look at it and abide by state law, and I have no conflict of interest.
And my very last question, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but you and Art Rag created the PUD. You wrote that document?
No, I did not write that document. Attorney Michael Ramsdale wrote that document.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Everyone good?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up for the Planning Board is Ralph Brutus.
Ralph.
Ralph?
I thought you said Rolf.
No. Ralph Brutus, is that correct? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Do you want to make an opening statement?
My name is Ralph Brutus. I've been a resident in Londonderry for 30 years. I've been part of a lot of different things, especially youth programs, from coaching to my kids' teams, businesses in town. I've been part of a lot of things, though. Something new for me, I like to join the Planning Board just to learn more the inner workings of the town and hopefully help for the future.
Excellent. Any questions for Ralph?
Sure. What is the role of the Planning Board?
Well, the role of Planning Boards basically is looking what's best suit for the town and more, for example, for a piece of land that's, we were just discussing earlier on, I would say something to the fact like some people want it to be preserved, some people want it to be built, at the same time to make it be able to serve the community better than just either business or just conservation land. Just making decisions.
Do you have any experience with drawings of plans and site plans?
For my personal stuff, yes, but I'm not a professional at it, no.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for stepping up. It's appreciated. I'm going to ask you kind of the same questions. Did you, do you see any conflict of interest? Do you have any connection to developers or contractual guys, real estate people? Are you, have any connections to all of that or...?
I do own real estate, so...
I'm sorry?
I do own some real estate, so...
Well, no, I meant more like, like, real estate agents or companies, like you work for them or anything like that.
No, I do not.
Work for developers or anything like that?
No.
Would you be willing to take all the training that, I think it was Mr. Olson said, that there was a lot of training available?
Well, yeah, definitely.
That you could do Zoom-ins and get like that certificate and stuff? Would you be willing to do that, to sit on the board?
Sure. Definitely, that's...
And we also heard other residents talking about growth. I'd like to know your feeling towards growth.
Well, growth is always a good thing. It doesn't mean physically in size. A lot of times, it's knowledge. So as a town, sometimes we make mistakes over the years in that by just having the knowledge of for future, it helps in growth aspect, but I don't think growth is a bad thing. So sometimes, like, when I moved to Londonderry 30 years ago, you could drive from Enden Hudson to Enden Londonderry in 10 minutes.
Nice.
Now, guess what? It does not happen anymore. So at the same, so growth is a good thing. So it all depends which way you want to grow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I got my same questions. So part of the process is if a developer comes in and he wants to build something, the Planning Board might request a traffic study.
Okay.
And currently, Londonderry has a developer hire a company to do the traffic study if it's required. What are your thoughts of having the developer put the money in escrow? The town hires that person, so then that in, the town is the one that's in charge of the traffic study, and they can control, they know exactly what is being studied.
So you're looking basically for inclusion, basically?
Correct.
Well, I just always feel that it's always something you could try, especially how big the project is. If it's a small project, it's not a big, I don't think it's a big deal, but if you're talking about a huge conglomerate moving into town and you need to get a traffic study done, I would think it would be beneficial for the town to be in charge of that because I just think it's cleaner that way, and there's no pointing fingers of after the fact. So if the town made the decision, it's clear, it's cut and dry, it's done.
So you've lived in town for 30 years?
Yes.
And you've seen a lot of growth happen in town?
Yes.
Do you think that Town of Londonderry could have done things a little differently, that maybe slowed down growth, the way we did it, do it differently at all, or do you think it's good?
No, there's things you could always go back on and say, well, I wish this didn't happen, I wish that had happened, but, and life is an experience. So I think the town itself has learned a lot from certain things that we've done and set in place. So that's why I think planning is important because I just think that at the end of the day, we all need to look back on, in history, what's happened and how things came about so we could do better, make better decisions for the future. So I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a one thing or another that's worse than the other. I just feel that, for example, in my street, there's 55 older communities everywhere. When I first moved in, there wasn't any, so I'm not going to say it's a bad thing. The taxpayer is just like we are, so it all depends how you're looking at it.
Thank you. This is not your first time to apply for this, right?
My first time, yes.
Is it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next, we have for the Planning Board, Christine Perez. Welcome back, Christine.
I have a statement to read.
Sure.
I think it'll answer your questions. Christine Perez at 5 Wesley Drive, resident of Londonderry for 17 years and in New Hampshire for 44. I'm a retired, having done so in December 2012, registered nurse specializing in cardiac, intensive care, ER and recovery room. My profession is a positive for me because I've always been required to pay close attention to detail. I'm in my second term as your state representative, and I've had several bills signed and passed and signed over the past three years. All of my bills have been at the request and the benefit of my constituents. I'm acutely aware of the process of the legislation at the state level and how it directly impacts the town. I've been on the zoning board for a short three months, but have learned much. I've been following closely the works of the towns for multiple years. I have attended many school board, town council meetings, as well as planning board meetings. I'm acutely aware of the planning process from start to finish when it ends with the Town Council. I have put many letters to the editor into The Times in an attempt to inform residents, much like my attempt to clarify possible misleading information at Public Comment Today. The residents have spoken loud and clear at the ballot, in surveys, and online over the past several years. They want change. They do not want the same individuals in power over and over again. They want a fresh perspective that comes from an informed individual. I could be that individual. An educated change in direction, different from the past 14 years. They want to slow growth, limit traffic, and limit government waste. They do not want to see their land given away, and they want what they were promised without excuse, excuses. My only desire, they, I have no personal, political, or professional agenda that would interfere with my position or cloud my judgment on this board. My only desire is to do what is best for the town and its residents. But all of that being said, and seeing that there are so many new, fresh eyes and individuals running for this position, I am hopeful. I respectfully withdraw my application for Planning Board in hopes that the council will recognize this as another sign that people, residents, want new faces, new ideas on their planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Up next for Senior Resources, we have Thomas Walker. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You want to make a short statement?
Yes. I'm a 58-year resident. I spent 15 years as a volunteer firefighter, and I wanted to do something in the near future, so I applied for this.
Oh. Just put the mic closer, they can't hear you. Sorry. Thank you, Dave. Do you have other town board experience? Is this your first time signing up?
This is my first time signing up.
Awesome.
Good for you.
Yeah, thank you. What is your availability for the board?
Pretty much unlimited in the fall, winter, and spring. Summer would be limited.
Any other questions?
I just want to say the Senior Resource Committee is a great committee. We have a lot of good people on there, and they do great things. Love to see you join them. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Thomas?
I'm good. Yeah, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it. Up next for Housing and Redevelopment, ZBA and the Tiff District, we have Gregory Carson.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Want to make an opening statement?
I just wrote one. Because everybody else is reading a statement, so I figured, oh, the heck, I'll do it real quick. Good evening. My name's Gregory Carson. I was the council. I've lived in Londonderry for more than 35 years and spent much of that time involved in public service in one way or another, whether it was through local, state, or federal government. By profession, I'm an attorney, but for the last 20 years, I've served as Director of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Field Office Director. I've served on occasion as the Regional Administrator, various other roles within HUD. In that, part of that, I ran Medicare for the federal government and most of the IRS for quite a while. So if you filed your taxes online or looked up where your refund's coming, that was me. And I actually left working in service, but here in the state and with the town in the late 90s when I became Assistant Director of the US Mint to do the 50-state quarter program. In town, I had served on the Londonderry Board of Adjustment for about 10 years, about half of which I was the chairman. I worked, I was the liaison to the Economic Development Committee, worked with relocating the town offices when we went down to where the St. Mary's Bank is before... when we went down to where the St. Mary's Bank is before coming back to here. Worked on the first group of people who were working on and worked through the process with the budget committee, the Economic Development Committee and the council to buy the development rights for the first set of apple orchards in town. And I served three terms in the New Hampshire legislature as a representative from Lunedary. In my first term, I was appointed assistant majority leader. My second term, I was appointed vice chairman of the Commerce Committee, worked a lot with the town on looking at development issues. My biggest accomplishment as a state representative was, hopefully nobody will throw anything at me at this, but myself and Senator Tom Colletuno put together the SB two form of town government. And which has a lot of flaws in it, but you know, hey, it was, it was a long time ago. The first board or first, my first activity in town was actually in nineteen eighty nine when I went to my first town meeting. And then the moderator, Bill Foley grabbed me as I was coming through the door and asked me to be his assistant moderator for the day because John Michaels wasn't available that day. And he knew that John and I were friends and attorneys and stuff. So I'm coming back. I am retiring or I have retired. I don't actually officially check out till the end of December from working as the director for HUD. I, I'm going to have a lot of free time. I saw the opening game up. I just put laundry list of things of, whereas special experience, I certainly have a lot of housing experience. I mean, sixty to seventy percent of low income housing, senior housing, veteran housing, homeless housing that's been built in the state of New Hampshire in the last twenty years, I've had my hands on it some way or another. I've worked with every town, all through the state government. I have all the access and resources through the federal government, the nonprofits, you know, developers, nonprofit and for profit developers. So I have a tremendous amount of experience when it comes to housing, probably more than anybody in the state of New Hampshire, to be honest with you. But I'd like to use some of that, a good effort to come back to town, work for town government and do some things for the town that I've raised my family in over the last thirty five plus years.
Excellent. Any questions for Greg? Deb?
I'll go first. So you applied for three. And if you had to pick, what would be your number one choice and why?
Okay. I really enjoyed my time on the ZBA, but I think I would be better suited working with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority because of what their responsibility is for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So I'd say stick with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is my number one choice. But it seems like there's a lot of people applying for ZBA and that. So let's say there's a need for vacu, or vacuum where a lot of ZBA experience has been had. I used to teach the course on, for the municipal association for new ZBA instructors. I'd be glad to come and do that.
And so do you feel that you have a conflict of interest on any of these boards? Like, would there be some sort of conflict for you?
Well, the great thing is that I'm retired and, no, in fact, I think if anything, Lunedary would have a great asset, whether it came to working with the state or the, or developers, especially for low income workforce housing and the federal government in terms of not just for housing, but for other economic development opportunities.
So I know.
And I'm not going to be doing any of that work on my own. I'm not retiring to be a consultant or any of those kind of things. Working in my yard. I have a, oh, and everybody, I think, or a lot of people know my boss. So my only conflict is when the senator says, I don't like that idea. I probably would have to say.
Oh, boys. My last question is, how do you, now I'm going because you chose housing and development. How do you think what you're bringing can improve that group? Like, they're not, I don't see we as a council, we don't really know what they're doing. But obviously you must know what they're doing and have an idea or some thoughts of what could maybe spark that up.
So I do have some thoughts to that. I actually happen to, you know, know the history of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in town. A lot of you might be surprised, although I've talked with Sean and Ron before when we were talking about the Superfund sites and everything else. I have a signed autograph edition of Moonlight Over the Landfill by Fran Schmidt. And if you don't know what that means, you've not been in town long or long enough.
Just thirty years.
Yeah, just thirty years. Yeah, it's not there. And we actually got involved with town politics because right after we moved in, like two weeks after we moved in, they decided they were going to build the, what's turned out to be the Salem Mall up the street from my house, which has turned out to be Home Depot and Staples and that. So we got involved pretty quickly once we got here. But in terms of that, we don't really do much in terms of the activity of housing development. I don't see a lot of, I actually look back through some of the other minutes that are kind of sparse for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. But most towns and cities of the state don't have very active Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The ones that do actually are the ones that actually own housing, like the Dairy Housing Authority or the Salem Housing Authority. I don't recommend that we get into that business because, to be honest with you, it's expensive and there are other people who do it much better than that. But the Redevelopment Authority originally started back in the nineteen fifties when the Air Force Base, which is out of Manchester Airport, was actually being decommissioned. And a group of about six or seven, I'll call them town fathers at the time. I'm pretty sure at the time, Ozzy Varani was probably a very young man at that time. So it was people other than him, along with Oswald, that actually put up their own money and wrote personal guarantees for the town so the town could actually buy the land that was up at the airport. And so, you know, originally it was more economic than it was about development. And a lot of what turned out to be the town's very beneficial interest, the airport and the airport authority and the area surrounded, were protected by two groups. Them, you know, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and actually the zoning board. I know that because I was chair at the time, but that's a long story. But so I think if we started looking at, as a lot of people have talked about, how much housing? Where should it be? What kind of housing should it be done? Do we need to get veterans housing in town? Do we have a demand? Do we have a demand for more senior housing? God forbid. Do we have a demand for, you know, low income workforce housing? So I think that committee could actually start to work on that. As far as what they're able to do, I think a lot of people would be surprised at how much a Housing and Redevelopment Authority can do, including purchasing land, encumbering, you know, land, you know, working with contractors and things like that. So I think there's kind of a, it's, it's been a sleepy little board, I think, for quite a long time, even when I was chairman of the ZBA.
I just want to say thank you for the history. Wonderful to hear that whole story.
Done all these jobs, so.
Thank you.
I do. So it's, you know, kind of interesting that you bring up the airport area because that's where all the land that the Lunedary Housing and Redevelopment Authority owns right now. There's four parcels of land. They're all industrial, either one or two, depending upon the color of the shading. So it's kind of, in a way, a misleading name for the group, right? So I think mostly what the group is trying to do is probably market these properties to eventually be sold off to be developed for the town.
That was the point. Yeah. That was, you know, the, the whole point of, of having the Redevelopment Authority originally was to actually market that property and get the development that we have up in the north end of town that is one of the big factors in keeping our taxes down. Because that is the biggest impact in keeping our taxes down is having the businesses in the right part of town, doing the right work and paying, you know, taxes. So that should be the goal, you know, the continued goal of the Housing and Redevelopment.
Right. I was just bringing up because you brought up a lot about housing for quite a bit there. It's really more the commercial industrial of these properties.
The reason I brought that up is that because we, I've been to a couple of meetings a few months ago and housing comes up all the time and they talk about that. And it's, you know, I think there is a place for a board to concentrate on looking at that comprehensively of what housing should be, you know, what housing is needed in town, if any. And if, if there is a demand, how do you address that demand? If there's an overage, then, you know, how do you kind of curb that development back? Because too much can be, you know, too much of a good thing is not a good thing. I mean, I'm going to take forever for me to get out of my, up the street from my house now on Gilchrist Road, coming up with the housing on both sides of the street that's going in, so.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, Greg, I've known you for a long time in town and watched you involved in the community a lot. And I appreciate, you know, you coming in and stepping up and giving us all the history, you know, which, which is valuable, you know? And I think, you know, any of these boards that you signed up for, I think you'd be a great asset for. And I want to thank you.
Like to help out in some way, just keep involved.
You want to be?
Yeah, I'm glad with someone with your experience, that would apply to the, I'm very grateful, thank you. And if I don't get selected, there's always some other time or another board or something like that. So, you know, I know some people have been working to, you know, work their way up boards and stuff like that for a while. But I'm always glad to come and talk about and offer that expertise, even if it's not as a member of one of the boards, so.
And I know sometimes it's hard, you know, to get that one board that you want to be on. I'm looking at it going, would you be interested in more than one if, if it was available?
Oh, sure. I'm, I.
Since you're retiring, you have time on your hands.
The senator is absent a lot for what she's on. So if I'm not driving her someplace, I'm sitting at home.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question for Kirsten, who manages a lot of these positions. Kirsten, I believe back in October, we had appointed Bill Mee to the Tiff District because he's on the Lunedary Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And I see that his position on that board is up. Would that kind of make that null and void that we, if we didn't appoint him back to the Lunedary Housing Authority? Wouldn't it be kind of backwards?
Not necessarily because you currently have two members on that board. One is your council, the council member, and the other is Bill Mee. You would just need to, if you didn't reappoint Bill to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, you would need, he would become the citizen rep on that board instead of the petting guild, instead of the in district rep. You would need to then recruit somebody or the, you would, the board would need to appoint somebody from inside or abutting the district.
Right.
So he could still serve on it. It would just be in the citizen representative capacity instead of the representative capacity. But he is, if you look at your individual sheets, for each individual one, he did also request reappointment, so.
Just wanted clarification for the board.
So yeah, no, he would not have to be removed from the, the Tiff advisory board.
Okay. Thank you.
Up next for Budget Committee and Conservation Commission, Rebecca Rowe.
Good evening. Want to make a small statement or?
Sure. I don't have anything prepared, but I can definitely tell you more about myself. I'm Rebecca Rowe. I live at three sixty eight Mammoth Road. I live, I've lived in Lunedary for two years now, so a newer face. I have been the church clerk at my church for a little over a year now. And I also graduated from UNH with a zoology degree in twenty twenty three, so I have that experience. Both the Budget Committee and Conservation Commission are both passions of mine and interests. I'm a stay at home mom, so I do have time on my hands. I am also an executive assistant remotely. Yeah, that's a little bit about me.
All right. Any questions for Rebecca?
I see you have a good deal of experience managing with budgets, handling the income and expense tracking at the church. That's great to see.
Yes.
Bring that experience to the Budget Committee.
Yes.
I think it would certainly be helpful.
Yes.
And certainly I like to see another young person.
Thank you.
Be involved, thank you.
Thank you.
Deb, go ahead.
Thank you for stepping up.
Of course.
Which one, I'm going to say what I said to Greg. If you had to pick, which one would be your preference or your number one choice and why?
Probably Budget Committee. I feel, as a lot of other taxpayers feel, that there's necessary work that needs to be done with the town budget, so that would be my preference.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead then.
What do you see the role of the Budget Committee as for the town?
So the Budget Committee is a group of seven members as an advisory position. So we would advise the town, the school board on how we think the money should be spent from a taxpayer standpoint.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next for Conservation and Recreation, Gary Delagroda? Brad Delagroda?
Delagroda, yeah.
Sorry about that. Welcome, sir.
How are you?
How are you doing?
Good. Opening statement. Been here since nineteen eighty six. Seen a lot of growth over that period of time. Some nostalgia for some of the lost apple orchids. Interested in, you know, preserving some open spaces. When new development comes here, when new industry comes here, making sure they, I guess pony up a little bit in terms of preserving some of the property in Lunedary.
Any questions?
I just recently retired, so I have some time on my hands. I'm a pediatrician.
Well, thank you for stepping up. Any questions for Gary?
I have, I just have a question on conservation.
Yes.
All right. What do you see the Conservation Commission's role in the community?
I guess a couple of facets. Number one, when development occurs and they want to, you know, fill in wetlands or, or build close to wetlands or have people who want to, you know, do something outside of zoning, excuse me, and want some variances done, you know, kind of making sure that it, it pertains to what we want as a town to do. I'd like to see more land protected. I've seen lots of growth in the last thirty odd years. Once that land is, is, is built, it's done. And so I think we're losing a little bit of the character of the, of the town, so.
Thank you.
Deb?
I got to change topics a little bit. You also put down Recreation Commission. Do you have much experience working with sports teams and being involved in that nature?
So my kids obviously went through a lot of the rec in Lunedary. I did do some soccer coaching when they were younger. I'm a pediatrician, took care of a lot of kids in town. Know sort of the importance of athletics and being involved in a team, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I'll ask the question that Deb has been asking. Do you have a preference either Conservation or Recreation? Do you have a preference of either one?
I like both of them, but I think Conservation would be my preference.
Okay.
How are you enjoying leadership Lunedary?
It's great. Yeah. Everybody should go through it, so.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Up next, we have Michael, up next for Recreation Commission, we have Michael Bartlett. Welcome, sir.
I just have a quick statement, just my bio. I pretty, fairly extensive one in my application. So my name is Mike Bartlett. I live at twelve Checkerberry Lane, the north corner of Lunedary. I've moved to Lunedary in two thousand to raise my family here from Boston. Since then, I've had now two additional children, but they're all in their twenties, so out of sports. But I've had, all my kids have gone through pretty much every sports program and I've participated in that since, you know, since two thousand and four, basically, when they were old enough. Since twenty nineteen, I've been part of the Lunedary Soccer Club. But I plan to resign and move out of that role, transition out of it in the, in the, in the springtime. My current role is Director of Operations, so I basically maintain buildings and grounds. So making sure the fields are lined, making sure goals are set up, making sure the concession stand is maintained and any other building and grounds. I work a lot with Sid now, you know, to sort of coordinate, you know, sort of working around certain projects and things like that. Working now with some of the town leaders like John, you know, in the engineering department as well for things like lighting and those kind of projects. So I think really what I wanted to point out from the perspective of when we combined the two clubs in town, because as you know before, they were Lunedary Youth Soccer and Lunedary Soccer Club. When I started in twenty sixteen on the rec side and then we were probably purely, obviously, the rec, you know, it was kind of divided. Twenty nineteen, when we combined the boards, to give it an example, we had about three hundred and fifty kids in the rec side and about a hundred and twenty kids on the travel side. rec side and about 120 kids on the travel side. Since then, we've essentially doubled the size of the group. We have over 700 kids generally on the rec side and about 200 to 300 kids on the travel side, depending on sort of the season and what the commitments are of the children, depending on fall and spring. Our goal really, as a board, is to build and develop the youth soccer program within Londonderry, to move into the high school, to fortify the high school, and make that a better program, and to try to pull some of these kids away from the travel clubs that are basically propagated across this part of New Hampshire and down into northern Massachusetts. And so, I think really, ultimately, as a rec member, I want to sort of continue that work across the entire town with all the sports, and I have, I believe, the experience to be able to support that.
Excellent. Any questions for Michael?
No, I know you and I had spoken last spring when we were putting out nets together about all your experience and all that you've done for the programs in town. I certainly think your knowledge would be very helpful moving forward with the Recreation Commission. And thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and I just want to say it's a team effort, right? I mean, you know, many of our board members don't have children in the program anymore. They've aged out, but we're trying to bring in new volunteers and board members. We have some great board members now who we see have long-term, you know, potential commitments because their children are young. And so, you know, we're trying to turn over the club, you know, and improve it, you know, with lighting improvements, grounds improvements, working on things like handicap access, which we don't have currently, and so those kind of things are things that we're working on to try to improve. And just leave the, you know, we have this precious resource at the club, right, town fields, and, I mean, we don't take it for granted, and so we just want to try to do whatever we can and to leave it better than we got it. And so, that's sort of my overall goal with all of, sort of, the Recreation Commission. As you see, all my children have come through all the way from when they were young to through the high school, right? And so, you know, I just want to, you know, with more time on my hands, because I don't have to cart them around, I want to be able to try to, you know, continue that as well as I can.
Excellent. Any other questions? I just want to say thank you for stepping up, because, you know, if you look on Nelson Road, our recreation fields over there, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, they all need some help.
TLC.
So, I think it's great that you can bring that expertise to the community.
Yeah, and I'll say Sid has put in a lot of work over there, too.
Working, losing him.
It used to be parents, right, chipping in, you know, to do all of that, right? And we were lucky to have the fields at West Road that were owned and maintained by the town, so, yeah, just want to sort of continue that tradition. Obviously, we need to bring more people in, because it takes a village, but, you know, it's hard, right? It's hard to get people to volunteer nowadays. They just want to pay their money, and they just want to have somebody else take care of it, and so it's a balance, right? I mean, we have to keep everything up. We still have to pay people to run concession and do certain things, but all, our board is entirely volunteer-driven. We put in a lot of work. Everybody puts in a lot of work, and so, again, I feel like with that experience, I can sort of hopefully continue that and bring that to the rest of the different sports and recreation activities in town.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
My last thing is, thank you for stepping up. I'd like to kind of get a feeling, like, do you think Recreation should be more town or should it stay more towards volunteerism?
Well, again, volunteers are tough, right? I mean, look at, we've, we have, you know, again, we've grown the club since we merged by about double, right? We're getting more volunteers. We're getting more people stepping up to fill, you know, roles, because basically, you know, I had five or six jobs at once, right, within the board, but we sort of spun it off, and we've got more volunteers to support it, so I can sort of focus on different things, and then hopefully I can get rid of those last couple in the spring, so I can move on to another role. But I think it has to be volunteer-led, right? The people have to commit to, like, their children's, the good of their children, you know, and if they can commit to the good of their children and their community's children, I mean, that's the commitment level that we need to be able to continue to grow, because we can't scale, right? If we have 1,000 kids in the program now, you know, when I started...
Which is awesome.
Yeah, when I started, we had, you know, like I said, 500, and we were competing with, you know, lacrosse in the spring, and certainly baseball has dwindled as well, but baseball is coming back, right, due to the great work that they've done. Wildcats, you know, has always been a great organization, so we have to have volunteer step up, because otherwise, we can't scale, right? It's, at some point, people are going to leave, and what's going to happen? You know, we could get taken over by another club, right, who basically brings an experience to the town that we've been trying to build up with the people who were in that role before us, but also the current group and hopefully the future group.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Up next, we have Conservation, Recreation, and Senior Resources. We have Harry Schwartz.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, sir.
First, excuse my attire. Came here right from work, so I smell like a steak tip. My name is Harry Schwartz. I've lived in Londonderry for 12 months and live on 26 Sheffield Way, a new development at the end of Gilchrist. I have a strong interest in several committees, but basically being part of the town. I come from Massachusetts, where I am a retired police, fire alarm, and emergency medical services dispatcher, and also a paramedic, and volunteered in the Coast Guard for many years as senior medical officer in Gloucester, Massachusetts, after having received several awards for lifesaving and firefighting. I graduated from Harvard University in 1992 with a degree in natural science, cum laude, and I took a whole variety of classes, several of which were ecology, archaeology, and anthropology, which kind of are intertwined, if you think about it somewhat. But I came here before you today with other experience, too, but I want to be involved in the Conservation Commission primarily, because I see it as a dichotomy between the need for people who want to move here and expand the community naturally based upon population growth, and tempering that with the very important idea of conserving Londonderry's natural resources. And I think that's a tough act to follow, but it's something that I really would like to be involved in, and I've had experience planning things from the Special Olympics in Massachusetts, where I worked for several years running the cruiser convoy program, going from, I think we had 40 cars in the beginning, to about 170 cars at the end, from all over the place, including the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, who came unknowingly to me to join in the fun and help these young athletes succeed and have a great time with their families. So, I do have some experience planning certain things, not necessarily in the field of conservation, but I think I bring a fresh idea, an intellectual idea tempered with non-biased political attitudes. I see things straightforward as they are, and I, when I came here, this nice clerk, I don't remember her name, but she did my motor vehicle registration, and within two seconds, I fell in love with this place. So, it's not Massachusetts. I really like it here, and I want to be part of the town.
Excellent.
Love it.
Any questions for Harry?
He kind of answered my question.
No, I'm also a student of your Learn Londonderry program, with these two counselors having been there, and Mr. Malholland as well, so, and that's great. Learned a ton, way more to go, but, you know, embarrassingly, I don't know a hell of a lot about it, but I'm willing to learn and do what I have to do to become a part of something that I feel is very, very important to the town.
Great. Thank you for signing up.
Excellent. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you for stepping up, and thank you for the kind words about our clerk's office. Thank you, Harry.
I got to say, I don't think we've ever seen anyone ever before move to town and within 12 months or less wanting to say, I want to get involved in the town. How can I get involved? It's really impressive and very welcoming.
Well, thank you. I mean, I met with Sherry, I think, is her name, the clerk, and we had a half-an-hour conversation in the first two seconds that I was in there, and she told me all kinds of things, and, you know, it welcomed me to way beyond what I expected, and I think that's a big thing here about the town. It has a small-town feeling, yet it's growing. There's industry here, and medicine here, and shopping, and things for people to do, and a load of that is recreation activities based on your huge amount of land and natural resources, so.
So, do you have a preference, Harry, which one, Conservation, Recreation, or Senior Resource?
Well, it's, sorry about this, but it's tough. When I was a police officer, my chief had voluntold me to be the Senior Resources Officer. In Massachusetts, it's called triad, and it's a conglomerative effort between the police department, the Essex County District Attorney's Office, and the senior community. And I ran that for several years, and I really loved it. I saw the seniors as clear-cut victims of fraud, especially fraud. It worked many cases, and it was great to be able to interact with them on their level. So, it's tough for me to say, but if you made me pick one, I'd say Conservation.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Yep. On Monday, December 1st, we've got seven more individuals to interview for the positions, and then we will be appointing at that point. So, thank you for everyone that interviewed tonight. We appreciate it. Up next, we have new business. Discuss and approve curbside trash collection and recycling waste management contract. Mr. Carey. Hello, Mr. Trotier.
What's the matter?
Thank you both for your hard work on this contract.
You're welcome.
You're very welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Trotier. With me this evening is Bob Carey. We're here to request that the Town Council approve the Amendment Number Four to the current waste management contract for curbside trash collection and disposal, and recycling collection and marketing services, and also to issue authority to the town manager to sign that Amendment Number Four. Bob is going to briefly elaborate further on the current contract, the negotiations that we went through, and the benefits and savings associated with Amendment Number Four.
Okay. Thank you, John. Some of you may have heard this, somewhat of this last week, but I feel it's prudent to recap it. So, the town is currently in year three of a five-year contract. Years one through three of this contract included contractual increases in the unit prices of 6% the first year, 5% the second, 5% the third, the year we're in right now. Contract also called for a unit cost increase in year four, which is the fiscal year we're looking at for the budget, of 20%, and then year five of 14% on top of that. In May of '25, the staff reached out to Waste Management and basically asked them to review the pending contractual price increase of that 20%. We were happy with the response. The response, they indicated that, well, record inflation levels that were seen back in '22, when the contract was actually put together, had subsided significantly. They offered that if we could extend the contract three additional years, so it would have a total of five more years of duration, they could live with minor adjustments to the trash costs, most of them, but there were some things that they needed to adjust. There were just some things they couldn't live with anymore. One of them was they were absorbing a lot of dumpster tonnage costs that just were getting not counted for. Another one was transportation processing costs from the Auburn Transfer Station, which they were absorbing quite a bit. Recycled tonnage costs, believe me, the dumpster recycling was not being counted for, the tonnage of that, so they had to correct that. And then, the processing costs for recycling themselves is just climbing, and they had been held back down due to the contractual. They needed to make an adjustment on that, too. So, what they, what we decided and what we worked with is, okay, let's make this year, fiscal year '27, the adjustment year. This is where we'll go in. We'll correct the unbalances, if you will, of the costs, move forward, and then have unit increase costs, or unit cost increase of 5% for the next four years after that. And that's just what we did. Negotiations began with the town staff and Waste Management, and it went on for several months. John was involved, Justin was involved, the finance director, of course, the town manager was brought in on it. And for year four, we arrived at an increase, a maximum increase of 15%, which is fiscal year '27, with the year cost for fiscal year '28, which is year five, of only 5%. So, what that resulted in was a decrease in cost over the original contract, the next two years, of $360,000. So, Amendment Number Four also extends formally the contract duration another three years for a unit cost of 5% each year for fiscal year '29, '30, and '31. Because of this, this results of this negotiation, we're going to be able to, the projected cost for year four, which is fiscal year '27, projected cost per household for the trash collection, disposal, recycle collection, and marketing is going to be done per household for $20.91. And as John said, we're asking for council approval on this contract amendment, and the approval for the town manager to sign the contract.
So, I move that the Londonderry Town Council approve the Waste Management Contract, Amendment Number Four as presented. Move that town manager, Sean Malholland, is duly authorized to enter into contracts or agreements on behalf of the town of Londonderry, and in further is authorized to execute any documents which may, in his judgment, be desirable or necessary to effect the purpose of this vote.
Second. Motion from Sean, second from Ted. All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief votes in affirmative. Want to thank you both again for your hard work.
Thank you.
Up next, discuss and approve the pilot agreement with the Baldwin Senior Living Facility. Mr. Malholland?
All right. I'm going to punch in my 25-to-do password and load this thing up, so just give me just a second. If I try to do two things at once, we'll be here all night, and we're going to be here all night as it is, so just give me a second to do that.
Hope for blood.
No comments from you, Mr. Finance. Obviously, we have a pilot agreement. We have an exemption that was granted to the Baldwins that they applied for in the Coincidence Statute that they qualify for, and then the process goes to negotiations of a pilot agreement, and the parameters of the pilot agreement minimums are if a contract is not negotiated by November 1st, that the minimum of one of two numbers applies to what the pilot agreement would be. 10% of the shelter rents. Hold on one second here. If I try to think through this, I will screw this up, and who knows what bad things will happen to the community. Magic, it's the one it's supposed to do. All right. So, trying to figure out what the 10% of the shelter rents is a bit challenging. That statute was not designed for the type of structure that the Baldwins operates under. So, what that number is, is very difficult to figure out, and I suspect we'd probably be in litigation for a very long time trying to figure that out, because, again, the statute was not written for that purpose. The other issue that we would be faced with would be, the other option we have is, it's the municipal portion of the tax rate. That is, it defaults to one of the two if we don't negotiate an agreement by November 1st, and then a tax bill or a pilot agreement bill has to be sent out by December 1st, obviously just a couple of weeks away here. So, I negotiated that agreement. We had some difficulty initially trying to get them to meet with us. There were some communication issues, not sure what it was, but anyway, we finally were able to do that, and we came up with an agreement that goes above the minimum that they would pay. Instead of paying roughly $242,000, somewhere in that range, I'd have to recalculate it in the new tax rate, which would probably be a little bit less. They're offering to pay $410,000, and it has a built-in inflator of 2.5% every year for the next 10 years on that agreement. This has been reviewed by legal counsel. There really isn't much to do here, other than they've offered us more than what the minimum, and that's all they're required to do by state statute under the present law.
Mr. Town Manager?
Yes.
What happens when Building F is completed? It seems a little vague in the document from what I'm reading.
So, Building F is, right now, that plot is being taxed at its full taxable value. It's a vacant piece of land right now. When they develop that, and they qualify for the exemption, so as they're building it, what happens is, is if that goes between the period of after April 1st, whatever's on the ground on April 1st will be taxed at its full taxable value, because they won't qualify for the tax exemption until they actually occupy the structure and they're using it for the tax exemption. and they're using it for the tax exemption purpose. So the way that that agreement reads is they will, the pilot agreement will be reduced the amount of taxes that have to be paid. Taxes should be paid, well, depends on what it is, where they're at. If the building's 25% done, 10% done, or 90% done, it'll depend on what their construction schedule looks like. So they'll, they'll still pay the maximum, but that'll be taken off the taxes that are due.
So do we have a formula in place once the building is complete upon what they'll be paying us?
So when it, what the pilot agreement will change, because you have to pay the minimum, at least the municipal portion of that, they don't want to get on their order trying to figure out what the shelter rent would be.
Gotcha.
Who knows how that's going to work out for them or us. I suspect that would be significant litigation.
Okay.
Because the law is far from clear on what that actually means, because of the structure that they have. It's not like just a regular rent that you would have from a nonprofit housing unit.
Right.
That's pretty straightforward, pretty easy to read. This, they, this money that's paid upfront, and...
Do they have a timeline on building F?
They don't.
They don't right now? Okay.
They have to obtain their approvals.
They haven't gone forward on that yet. Okay.
Any other questions of the council?
I have one.
Go ahead.
In the event that the law does get changed, does the tenure agreement allow for that change to occur? And maybe it becomes null and void because they no longer meet the requirements under the law?
On an annual basis, they have to apply for the exemption. If they don't get the exemption, they just don't qualify.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The only thing I want to state is that the minimum would have been about $243,000, and town manager has negotiated it to over $410,000 with an increase set in there for every year. I know it's a long time, 10 years, but I think it's, I think it's good for the community versus just getting 243. So I'll propose that. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
No, go, go, I'm sorry.
Anything you can propose? Mr. Town Manager, thank you for doing a good job on this. This is a real basic question. If these guys were regular taxpayers on the property that they have, what would have been the tax that they would have had to pay?
It would have been about a million.
It would have been about a million.
Yes.
And they're paying for something, which is better than the two something, right?
Two forty-three.
Or potentially nothing.
No, I just kind of wanted that for the people out in the audience to understand that the million would have been fantastic, the four is great, but the two would have been really bad. So I was trying to...
There also could have been an option, maybe zero.
I'm sorry, Ted?
There would have been a potentially situation where they might have paid zero.
Well, that would have been even worse. So I just wanted to, because not everybody's budget-headed, so I wanted to make it that simple.
I don't know how they would pay zero, because either they have to pay the taxes, they get the exemption, and they have to pay a pilot. And the pilot has one of two limiting factors. Either 10% of the shelter rents, or the municipal portion, whichever one is lowest.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Zero's not an option for them.
Oh, good.
And this could change, right, in the future?
If there's statutory changes, absolutely. If for some reason they don't qualify for the exemption, whether it's statutory changes or something else, every year they have to apply for that and get approved for that. And that's clearly, you know, that's state statute.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll move that the Londonderry Town Council authorizes the town manager to enter into the pilot agreement with Baldwin Senior Living as proposed, and to take all actions necessary to affect the agreement.
Second. Motion from Dan, second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Up next, we have a budget workshop, and we're going to start out with a presentation for Mr. Mahollen on some budget cuts that we asked him to bring to us.
Oh, we're not doing the presentation. We're asking him to come back with a presentation.
Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry. Sorry. We're going to ask you, sorry, yes.
Different way. Wow, I mean, I think my calculator, I'll take the boots off.
Top of your head.
We're doing it now.
There's nothing on the top of my head, my friend. They used to be at one time.
No, we would, we would just like the town manager to come back with his recommendations for what the previously alluded to $400,000 would look like in his best interest to, to help make sure that it does not impact the services of this town as much as we can. I mean, you know, every dollar affects something, but to make sure that they're the least amount of impact that we can get. So thank you for that.
Yes.
That's the rest of the full council to do that.
Yes.
You're good? Good with that?
I guess it was decided, so.
I'm asking you if you're good with it.
I'm not really good with it, because, I'll tell you, we, and I brought this up last week, all right? We've, getting through some, the budget presentations, and I know that, Sean, you keep saying at a future date. But what's that future date where we're going to be able to come and discuss this, and discuss with the town manager and say, or end at department heads and say, well, where can we cut? Can we cut here? Can we cut there? I think people up here might have some ideas as well, besides the town manager. But I don't know, is that not something you want to entertain? You just want to just get the $400,000 and see where it goes from there? I don't know.
No, that's what I'm trying to find out, Sean. It's, I mean, usually you're the one who's going, we should see what the town manager has to say, and it can't hurt to see what the town manager has to say. In this instance, I think because it deals with the budget and the town manager's the closest to it, I do feel like he's the best one to come back to us with the recommendation of what that would look like. That doesn't mean that can't change. That doesn't mean we can't contribute other ideas. But I just want to start there. We had, we had come up with that amount. We want to get, try to get that amount in a responsible way, and so that's why we were asking the town manager to come back and show us what that looked like.
My concern, I know we have, we have timelines.
We do.
All right, and I just don't want to be, I have seen this happen many times when I watched, you know, him involved. You know, it's all at the end, and then it's like, well, we've got to make decisions, we've got to make decisions. And, you know, to me, we've already heard the presentations from the department heads, and I want to know at what point are we, as a council, going to discuss and say, you know, Sean, what do you want to look at in the budget? Is there anything in there that, you know, you think that we should be addressing?
Normally, we do that in December. So by asking this question now, we're really preempting that much earlier on, because in past years on the council, we would get to this point, usually in December or late December, and be like, hey, where can we maybe find some money again, or where can we make some tweaks? So I think coming at this now on an earlier stage is a lot helpful for the staff and for us as the committee.
That I need to know. Thank you.
All right, so then we're going to move on to senior affairs.
Okay, I am not in charge of senior affairs, but I am covering for Alona tonight. She asked me to pitch hints. So you get, you're getting a second-rate person doing that, so I will try to answer the questions as best I can for you. And so she's put together this presentation. I thought she did a good job with that. We're going to roll through it. Don't hesitate to interrupt for me as I'm going through. That's fine, just to go through it. And this slide obviously talks about the types of programmings that they have there, and the fees for those programs, just to give you an idea what those are. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that. And this just gives you another depiction of the budget in there. I mean, if you look at the increases in there, they're pretty minor. I think it equates to, what, $4,789 altogether? And then that's salary changes, and that's just her salary change in there. Other than that, there's not really a whole lot of significant changes from the previous year's budget. And then the operational challenges. This was something that I want, really wanted to spend some time discussing, was the need for additional part-time staffing in the senior affairs department. She is the only person who works in there part-time. They have tried to rely solely on volunteers. That is, you know, that covers some of it, but it's not the total solution. There is no additional money for an additional person in the budget. I did not put that in there. It is not in there. There's not a warrant article for that. But she did want to highlight that, because I asked all departments to highlight their needs. And then she has, again, spent quite a bit of time. She's, right now, it's her that has to do everything in terms of making sure the programs run out front when she's out back trying to manage the backend of that and doing their books. There's quite a bit to that. As you know, we are, I think we are the oldest population in the country now. New Hampshire, Maine and New Hampshire tended to go back and forth on that. And our, our population of senior people, I'm almost there myself, is growing faster than younger people are coming in to replace us. And the demand for those services continues to go up, and you can see the numbers. You had the previous slide. There's an increase in the number of people that are using the senior center, which is really good news. And the demand for that, those services continue to grow, and that really drives why she's asking for the additional staff that she is asking. Issues of food insecurity, housing and transportation, you've all heard about those before. And the big thing is, of course, loneliness. People being, and people, mental health-wise, that's one of the fastest ways to decline a person, is to have them isolated and not interacting with other people. And the senior center is able to do a lot of that programming, which really makes the quality of life for those folks rather important. So unless there's a whole lot of questions about this, you have a slide...
You had mentioned that there's a $4,000 increase?
What's that?
A $4,000 increase or decrease to their budget?
That's an increase.
Increase where? I'm not seeing on that slide there.
Staff.
Yeah. The regular salaries.
It's salaries and the associated taxes with that, as well as a $798 increase split between a couple of lines.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have a question. Ted, are you done?
Sure.
Okay. I think that's great that the membership has grown in the last three years. Is it possible to have her break out how many are Londonderry residents and how many are out-of-town residents, and what the financial difference is for Londonderry people versus out-of-town people? And I'd also like to have a better breakdown and an understanding of how the friends of the senior center works in conjunction with them.
They, they no longer do.
Well, no, they're their own, like, nonprofit.
They dissolved.
Huh?
They dissolved.
Oh, they did? When did that happen? I had no clue. I don't go to the senior center.
April of, I think.
Oh, so recent. Okay, I'm not that bad. Okay.
End of last fiscal year. I don't know the actual month, but it was towards the end of last fiscal year.
Thank you, Justin. So yeah, just that would be great to have.
I could certainly do that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
So you said there's, there's money for staff, but there's...
There isn't.
Okay, I was just clarifying that that, okay.
No, I did not, I did not include that in the budget. As you know, and you've seen it, you've seen the documents, there's a request for more staff than I can, we just can't afford to do all those things.
Just clearing up. I'm good. Thank you.
So Sean, they're, they're requesting staffing, but you're not putting it in?
I did not put it in the budget, no. So if that's something the council wishes to do, or the budget committee asks the council to do, that would be something you folks would have to act on to do that.
Thank you. Would you be able to put together what kind of cost that would be for us?
Yeah, there's the cover sheet that should have went out in the packet.
30% of the members are not Londonderry residents, which means that 70% are.
And is there any financial difference? Like a membership cost, I don't even know. 10 bucks? Is it 10 bucks for everybody, or?
10 bucks for Londonderry residents, 25 for non.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Effective October 1st.
I'm sorry?
Effective October 1st.
This year?
Yeah, 25.
Okay.
No other questions? Budget committee, you good? Dan?
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
So it looks like, yeah, so it looks like the annual cost for an extra person would be about between 18,000 to 28,000.
Yeah, that's, and that includes benefits and...
So because it's part-time, it wouldn't have benefits, but it would have the FICA and Medicare, vacation days, things of that nature.
So Justin, on, what'd you say, Ted? 28,000?
It's between 18,000 to 28,000, depending on how many hours.
So, Justin, $28,000, what kind of an impact is that on?
What, a third of a penny?
It wouldn't even be a penny. So you're saying, what, 28? No, where is that?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
We, did, did we just not direct Town Manager Mahollen to eliminate $400,000 from the budget? And now we're discussing adding something into the budget?
I think we're just saying what the cost is, but yeah.
I'm not talking about adding it. I'm wondering what the cost is, what the impact would be. And I don't, I have no idea what the cuts are that my fellow councils are asking for, so.
I'm confused. So that, that number you just mentioned, what was it, 28,000? That included everything?
It's up here.
Yeah.
That includes the taxes they have to pay.
There's no medical benefits or anything like that.
But you don't pay anything like disability or social security or anything?
Yes, that's included.
That's included in that 29?
The social security, the FICA.
That's included, right, Justin?
It's just social security and FICA.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
May I just ask one?
Absolutely. Yeah.
On the annual dues, if I understand correctly, 180 of the people are out-of-towners. Whether it's the 25, by the way, stupid question, but I'm not a senior citizen yet. Is this annual or monthly?
Annual.
Annual. Okay, and when was the last time these fees were adjusted?
This year, I believe.
This year, okay. All right, so it's not like we can smack another one on there. Okay, thank you.
It's this one?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, discussion of a request from the Grange for funding. Who was taking this one?
Hopefully, we have some folks in the Grange to chat about it.
Yeah.
Come on up here. Pull up a chair.
Welcome. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. For those who know me, those who don't know me, my name is William Perry. I live at 12 Kestry Drive. My wife and I have lived in town here for 31 years. Our children have benefited from all of the benefits that Londonderry has to offer. It is a wonderful town. We love this town with all of our heart. I've been a member of the Londonderry Grange for 19 years, and I took over for Hank Peterson 11 years ago as Grangemaster. And our sole purpose is to preserve the heritage of our beautiful hall here in our town. And we are in need of some help from the town to continue to be an active role in our beautiful community. And we are looking to put possibly a warrant article together to generate the funding needed to continue our operations costs, to continue to move the hall forward. COVID played a large role in a lot of my senior members leaving the Grange, just due to the fact that, you know, they, I had some members that had passed from it. This past year, my oldest Grange member, Gladys Woodland, passed away. She was a Golden Sheath member, and she was my oldest member. She was 103. And I'm one of the youngest members of the Grange, and I'm 56. So, you know, with heritage here in our community, and as everyone knows, it is a cornerstone of our community, and it is my sole purpose and my goal to preserve the heritage of our hall. So we ask of any support from the town to help preserve and move our Grange forward for future people in our community to enjoy what we enjoy. We encourage all to come in and be members of the Grange. As everyone knows, we are nonpartisan, nondenominational, and we strive to keep that the way that is. The Londonderry Grange was built in 1909, as everyone should know. It is a, it has been put on the historical registry office in 2004. We encourage, as I mentioned, all organizations to use our beautiful hall. However, due to the fact that there is some well-needed upgrades that need to be completed at the hall, there's a laundry list that I have, as well as my members of the Grange can generate for the community to see the needs that need to go in to preserve it. This town has been very generous over the years with various different parcels, with preserving various different entities. For instance, the town common, the Morrison House. The town has been very generous with appropriating funding that was needed to preserve that as another cornerstone. And we, like I said, are asking for help from our community. Our coffers are low. Everything that we generate goes right back into our yearly operation, and that is all we are doing with the hall. We've encouraged new members to join, younger members to join. younger members to join. But as everyone knows, it is a difficult task to encourage people to join nonprofit organizations. We have a vision, you know, and our vision is to have a meeting place for all to use in the future. We mentioned the Senior Center in North Londonderry. It would be wonderful to have a center for all of, all to use here in the center of town as well. Any questions?
Any questions?
So, we have a document that came forward to us looking like the potential expenses through a year totaling about 38, almost $4,000 a year. Would you guys be looking for about that or more than that to keep up with maintenance as well?
So basically what my committee has put together is we're looking at like, let's say 10 years. We'll look at it as a 10-year block. So if we could create a warrant article that would generate the funding needed to allow us to not focus on generating the dollars needed to just pay our operation bills in a calendar year because our resources are limited. If we could appropriate the funding needed for a 10-year period, that would give us the opportune time, seeing that we would get help from the community, to focus on creating new membership, creating repairs needed for the hall so that we can open it up for all. Right now, the hall is only open from April to November. We cannot use it in the wintertime because of the lack of insulation, the lack of hot water. You know, so for a 10-year period is what we're looking at. So if we could appropriate the funding, that would ease our yearly operation cost.
So how much money are you looking for a 10-year period?
So, we have some numbers put together. We'll say like, let's say $100,000. And through the town, we would use that for operations as well as repairs over that period of time. And along with that, we're going to be doing fundraising and things like that to give back to the community as we continue to do. Our yearly fundraisers that we do go right back into the community, Mums for Meals, the plant sales that we do, various different Eagle Scout projects that we've hosted at the hall and throughout the community. You know, it, it's, it benefits our community as a whole. My members are professional people that want to help out and be, like I said, a cornerstone of this community to give back to the community and open it up for all.
So I just want clarification. Maybe the town manager can help me out with this. Is this a town-owned property? This building?
No, it is not.
It's not?
The Grange owns, the Grange members own the hall.
Okay. And it sits on Grange property?
That is correct.
And it's historical?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Bill?
Did you say that it's not being used during the wintertime right now?
That is correct. My scouts can't use the hall.
Why?
Just due to the fact that it, it's uninsulated. And the cost.
I was an Eagle Scout from 521. I went there in the wintertime. I mean, I'm surprised that they're not willing to go there in the winter months.
The cost of fuel, to heat.
I wore a winter coat while I go home there, so.
Yeah, it. That is definitely something that our boys and girl scouts have done in the past.
Yeah.
However, moving forward, to encourage new people, to bring new ideas into the hall. It's a deterrent.
Is there a way to get insulation in the walls? Or is the walls too old to get insulation?
I'm sorry?
Is there a possibility of getting insulation in the walls or the walls to, how the building was built, too old to?
It is fully possible, yes.
It is a possibility, okay.
Yep, yep. There's various different types that we've looked at, blown-in insulation. There are multiple different companies that offer services that can, you know, provide adequate installations.
So is that what you'd be doing with the $100,000?
Well, that is one, that is one task, as well as we do have some concerns about our driveway. You know, we have to close the parking lot off during Old Home Day just due to the fact that there's a lot of tripping hazards, you know, and I would love to open it up to elderly or handicap access to have full access to, you know, the parade route. However, we don't want to get sued. We don't have the funding to support if someone gets hurt.
Gotcha, thank you.
Joseph, yeah. So, just, excuse my ignorance of the Grange. This is a nonprofit.
That is correct.
And why have you not applied for a community service grant through the town? Are they not able to? Do they not meet their requirements?
So, community service grants are for organizations, the town is actually prohibited by law from donating to nonprofits for just the sake of it being a nonprofit because it's taxpayer dollars. They have to, under ours, under the RSA's, it has to provide a service to the town that relieves the burdens of the taxpayers from doing it. So that's why all of our community service organizations are all, are social service organizations. So the Grange, well, wonderful, does not count as a social service organization.
To follow up to that, we did apply for a warrant article, 26, back in, I think it was 2017, I believe it was. We achieved $30,000 on that warrant article. And up to COVID, drawing the monies from the town to, you know, adequate various different projects that we were trying to achieve. We obviously closed the hall during COVID and the town took the funding back. The monies that were left on the warrant article.
And I guess annually, how much have you been raising since COVID?
Oh, enough to pay our insurance, the electric bill. Have not had the funding to purchase oil to heat the hall. We do ask the scouts to help out with that. And they're very generous to give what they can give. However, the scouting organizations across the country, as everyone knows, they're not the same. There's not as much membership as there used to be. So their coffers have, you know, changed as well. So, in a calendar year, most of our money goes into paying for the insurance, basically. There's a high cost for a place of assembly to adequately have insurance to, you know, open it to the public.
All right, and then I, are there some figures that you can just, how much is raised, how much you're expending now? The expenses that you're not making, if you're looking to propose this warrant article, are those figures that you could provide the Council and Budget Committee?
So, in regards to that, I'm a master electrician, 35 years. I generated and donated material and labor to upgrade the electrical system at the Grange Hall. It was over $40,000 in material and labor. And, you know, I generated that time and material to the hall, you know, to bring it up to code. You know, the town electrical inspector was, did a great job coming out and working with me to, and my team, to make that come to fruition. So is that basically what you're looking for as far as like an operating cost?
I guess, you know, just, you know, what, what do you, I guess, just the dollars amount raised. Yeah, just.
I actually had a very similar question. So what I was going to ask you actually is, what we were provided to Ted's point totals out to $38,000 over 10 years, just for operating costs. Add in some for inflation and such, that leaves roughly 60K or so over. Now, you spoke a little bit about insulation, but I think what we might be looking for is a breakdown. What are you actually thinking of doing over those 10 years? What does that 60K amount to? And what is your cash flow otherwise? So like a basic income statement. Because this is, you know, Grange line than a Grange property, and this is taxpayer money we're talking about here. I think what maybe we'd be looking for is just a little bit more holistic picture of the finances there.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So you want us to generate that for?
At a high level. You know, I mean, for example, you talked about insulation. It sounds like you've already talked to insulation contractors. I mean, you know, what kind of number were they quoting you, for example? What other projects are you looking at? What fits into that 60K, basically?
There are multitudes of. There are multitudes of projects that we've looked at to, you know, put a number on it. It's endless, you know, the building has been neglected for a long time and it needs a lot of repair. And we've done an incredible job. Some of us donated our own money to, you know, make it come full circle. So if, the ongoing operation funds, which include an annual building insurance, an annual boiler service, monthly electrical service and bi-annual oil delivery. So you have, just a rough number as we talked, so let's say 4,200 times 10 is $42,000 annually.
Right. So that's the ongoing operational cost, but we were asking about where the other 60K came from in the request for 100.
Right, so the foundation is falling in on the building? So that's going to be probably another article we'll have to write years down the road. So that has been a very big concern for the back half of the building. It is still adequate. It is safe. But we don't want it to get any worse, you know, so funding to do partial repairs for that now would, I think, help us down the road to do a complete repair.
Thank you.
Bill, I think coming back at us in December with the projects that the Grange is looking to be completed. And if you have any of the actual numbers that any of the contractors have given you at least rough pricing on, I think that would be helpful for the Council and the Budget Committee to move forward on this warrant article. So that we can actually get an idea upon what these projects are going to be costing.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. So, you know, I've been to your Grange meetings. I've tried to help you guys out with fundraising. There are so many grants out there. Have you guys been applying? Did you need help applying, especially to like the casino money? Have you been doing things like that? Have you been? I haven't heard any of that mentioned. I mean, I do know what you do for fundraisers, but for me, you know, you guys should be opening your doors every single night that there's a concert on the Commons and there should be a come in, donate, maybe run a bingo thing while the concert's going on or prior to the concert when people are eating their Happy Clam, One Happy Clam snacks there. I'm just saying, there are things that could be drawing more attention to your building. And I think you really have to put together a nice strategic plan on how you're going to get more people aware of who you are, what you do and what you want to do and the needs that you have and how they can contribute. I think if you have that, you're going to find that it's going to be easier to get the funds that you're looking for. I mean, I definitely would put your name on that list for that casino money. The VFW in Hudson just got almost $200,000.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that town-based, Deb?
What do you mean, town-based?
Is that grant town-based? Is it through the town or is it?
No, it goes to the state. You know, like so that Nashua, Nash, Casino Nash or whatever the name of it is. And there's one now in Salem. These casinos have an, you have to fill out the forms, you have to be a 501(c)(3). And they have a casino night for you and you get a percentage of the door. So then you guys put it out to the community and people you know to go that night. Somebody from your organization sits at the door and you tell people that and they, they check it off. And even if they don't know, even if they're not from our town, they say, yep, yep. And then you get that, that percentage of the door for that night.
It's usually actually 10 days. You get 10 days.
Well, there you go. But I'm just saying, these are alternatives and I'm sure they're out there. You just got to kind of dig and look and ask questions. So it's good that you came forward and did this so that you can get a dialogue going. I mean, instead of waiting for the, the foundation to cave in, let's start looking at how we can stabilize it so it doesn't get worse until you have the funds so that it's not as much money. I just think you need to start thinking about a, and you know, I'd be willing to help because I've always helped you guys. So just, you know, give me a call or whatever, but start thinking of a strategical plan, a marketing plan that's going to help you promote what you have here. It's a gorgeous building. It's in an unbelievable location. You have an opportunity to do a lot of things there. So, that's my two cents to you. But I really think you need to have it all in writing and a plan of how you're going to get there. And this will help your budget when you're doing this, these guys' things.
I will say one thing is you may want to look at for Constance and Common to maybe start selling parking. I park there every night for Constance and Common when I can get there because it's the best parking that you can get. And it's most easily accessible. And if you had someone there, just, you know, selling parking.
You can ask for a donation. They can't sell as a 501(c)(3). You have to ask for a donation.
Well, labeled as a donation.
I'm just saying, don't tell them to sell, they'll get in trouble.
I'd be more than willing to pay VIP parking to park there for Constance and Common. Like, to be able to help the organization out and to keep it going.
I guess the starting point for us would be, we want to try to keep it as much as possible community-based and have input from the community, you know, the taxpayers in the town of Londonderry having a say in what their hall is, you know, to do and move forward, you know. So that is why, you know, we were looking to generate funding through the community and having their voices heard on what they want. You know, sure, we can go seek grants throughout various different entities. That's wonderful. But we want the townspeople to have a say.
Of course.
What happens if the townspeople say no, though?
Obviously, we have to come up with alternatives.
Any other questions?
I just want to make, I just want to make a comment about your driveway. I mean, I'm looking at it. I'm very familiar with it. And I know it's a cut through for a lot of traffic and trucks, which is not good for your driveway. I don't know, maybe as a group you could look at, how do you limit, you know, people driving through there at certain times? Try to, try to preserve it as much as you can until you get it fixed. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, discuss and authorize the town manager to execute the commercial industrial tax credit agreement for New Balance. Ms. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the council is aware of this property, that being 55 Pettingill Road, which is occupied by New Balance Athletics, is currently under a pilot agreement, which was approved by the council in 2023. So as a part of that agreement, once the property transfers ownership, in this case being from the Business Finance Authority to New Balance Athletics, it requires a transition to a different agreement, that being the Commercial Industrial Tax Exemption Program. It essentially follows that ordinance that we have in place. So the agreement before you this evening provides for that transition. And so we're looking for the council to authorize the town manager to execute said agreement.
Any questions?
Yes. The pilot agreement that we had in place before, were there escalations built into that one or was it just a flat payment year after year?
So it was based on the 10-year program per the, following the same parameters that the site.
Okay, so I guess I'm looking at the valuation for the site is about, was a little, about, sorry. Tongue tied today, a little over $14 million. And so the first year.
So, just as a point of reference, we're in year three of the term as.
Oh, we are in year three now. Oh, okay, that helps for the equation. Okay, nevermind then. I'll have to redo math.
Any other questions?
Well, this was agreed upon in the whole process, so. Yeah. So I moved that the town council authorized the town manager to execute the commercial industrial tax exemption agreement for the New Balance Athletic, Inc., as presented.
A motion from Dan.
I'll second it.
Second from Deb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief has the affirmative.
So the rate goes down.
Up next, we have a presentation and discussion of the proposed revenue budget. Mr. Campbell?
Good evening. Up above you and attached you, I'll see what we are proposing for the revenues for the 2027 budget. As you guys are aware, I tend to go a little more conservative. That way, the number the taxpayers see on the ballot will be higher than what they see when the tax rate comes out. In comparison to when you first saw it, you'll notice that meals and rooms has changed because once we set the tax rate, we got the updated number for '26. And historically, what we've done is we've taken the previous year's number and put that in for the current year because it's usually just slightly above that. Wanting to answer any questions you may have regarding any of the. I'm willing to answer any questions you may have regarding any of the revenues and where it all came from.
Any questions for Justin? Just reading, hold on.
Okay. And actually, as I'm looking at this, the payment in lieu of taxes will need to be changed since we just authorized, since you just authorized New Balance's agreement, because they're currently included in that calculation.
Does the number change, or does it move to different lines?
So, what'll end up happening is the revenue there will decrease, however, the total valuation will increase.
Okay.
Yeah, so, gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a quick?
Absolutely. Please.
First of all, thank you for this. Could you just help me understand on line thirty-five oh-two dash oh-one, interest investments miscellaneous, what accounts for the curve up and the curve back down on those revenues?
That would be the interest rate, as well as the use of fund balance, and that's one that I usually will estimate lower, because there was one year I didn't, and it was COVID, so I went from about six-fifty to twenty, fifty thousand, I think, which was not fair to the taxpayers. And right now, speaking with our banking partners, we're looking at another cut possibly in December, and potentially two more before the end of June. So I don't want to estimate even higher, where we're looking at potentially three cuts before the end of this fiscal year, let alone next. And then we're also utilizing over five-and-a-half million, I believe, between different aspects for fund balance.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, you already answered my next question, which was, how much of it is interest rate cuts versus some decreases in the balance?
It's a combination of both.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate the explanation.
It's important to recognize that we, these aren't proposed, they're estimated revenues for the next year. When we set the tax rate in the fall, we look back and see where we're at then, at that particular time, and obviously, these numbers will be more solidified by then. And we're allowed to change those in front of the DRA when we submit the tax rate, so that's important to remember. It's different than appropriations. Whatever the appropriations are, when you set them, you set them. But revenues do get adjusted, and we do that, again, just at tax rate setting time.
Dan's got a question.
Justin, what is waste container revenue, thirty-four oh-five dash oh-oh-two? What is that? I have no idea.
That is for people who buy like an extra barrel.
Gotcha.
So all the revenue will go through that line.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Justin, what line is that pilot payment on? I'm not seeing that.
That is the third one down. Payment in lieu of taxes.
Oh, thank you. I missed that line item. Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin?
Does the pilot include the four-hundred-and-ten-thousand from the Baldwin?
It includes that, plus the two-and-a-half percent escalator.
Great, thank you.
Does it currently include the New Balance site?
That number right there does, yes.
Okay, so you'll have to amend that and move it.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation and discussion of the TIF district budget. Mr. Campbell.
So, what this is, is this is the TIF district budget. We're going to be portraying it similar to how we do the sewer fund, where it'll be part of the gross appropriation of the town. What this does is this takes the incremental value above what it was at frozen, and I applied the tax rate to move it forward. Where we don't have any expenditures this year, that's where you'll see that bottom line of use of fund balance, which allows nine-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand to be spent on various expenses in the TIF district.
Any questions?
Do we already have money in that account? A little confused where the nine-forty-five comes from.
So the property taxes, TIF restricted, is next year's taxes, so twenty-six.
Uh-huh.
The TIF district was established in March of twenty-five, which means that the twenty-five taxes.
So they're all even paying into it.
So, yeah.
Gotcha.
When they pay their December bill, you'll see that portion go in.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Justin. Up next, we have a budget workshop discussion. Mr. Mahoney, do you want to start us off?
This part is really easy, because we made our presentations, it's not really a discussion for you folks to ask us questions. I think Councilor Paul said to grill Mr. Mahoney, is what you said. So I am ready to be grilled, or asked, preferably, there are questions that I might be able to answer for you, so that you can do your duty and make a determination as to what the budget should ultimately be. And you've got certain departments that are listed on there, and that's Public Works and General Government. You have solid waste in sewer, and you have the town managers, various sub-budgets you have, and then you have Information Technology. So those are the questions we would propose that we entertain tonight and answer for you. I think we'll just broil you, not grill you.
Anybody want to start off?
I have a question. So, one of the things that I was looking into is in the town manager budget, what I saw was Tara's position was moved to HR, and they were creating a new department. Tara's salary, according to what I saw in the 2024 fiscal report, is a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, but we're only removing sixty thousand from the budget. Where's the extra sixty thousand going if we're just moving one line item to the next, but it seems like there's a disparity between her role and the reduction of that role, but that reduction isn't the full amount of what her annual salary would otherwise be?
It includes contractual increases as well. So the sixty thousand is the difference between the remaining four salaries on that department and their contractual increases, and removing Tara's and moving it over.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question. So on the rec department, I know that they were, it was, it was, what was the name? Art?
Yeah.
Art, okay, Art, and then the other gentleman next to him.
Doug.
Thank you, Doug. And they said that their titles are merging, so can I ask who's not going to be there anymore?
So Art will be traveling to the wonderful world of retirement.
Okay, good. That's what I figured, just wanted to ask.
Doug is way too young for that. As much as he'd like to retire, I'm sure he can't.
Yeah, cool. Okay, thank you.
I got a question on Public Works. I had a gentleman approach me, and he says, he had questions about the stuff at Public Works that we purchase over there. He said, last year, that that's not the mower, the way we approved, we didn't have a hotbox, I don't know, I wasn't part of it. How does that occur? So if we, if we say we want a mower, and that mower is not available, we have the option of purchasing something different, correct?
Yes.
As long as it meets within the guidelines and within the budget. So if we budget for that mower, let's say thirty thousand dollars, and as long as it doesn't exceed thirty, we're okay?
Actually, it doesn't work that way.
Okay.
The towns, when they pass the budget, it's a bottom-line budget. As you know, it's X amount of dollars every year, and once you do that, it's up to the manager to expend those funds. And you're making a budget that's going to be eighteen months out right now. So you don't know what the prices of anything are going to be. You're making, we're making our educated guess as to what, projections as to what those are going to be, and then things change, things happen during that year, so if we had thirty thousand dollars for a lawnmower, and it's thirty-five thousand, whatever the cost is, then that's what it costs to do that, and if I can afford to do that within the budget, then we do it. If we can't, we don't.
Do we have any plans?
I don't believe we bought a lawnmower.
No, I think he's using an example.
Oh, just using that as an example.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any plans in this budget for maintaining sidewalks, or not?
We do. In terms of winter snow removal?
Right.
Yes.
And what sidewalks are we?
Dave wants to come up and talk about that.
What sidewalks? Because a gentleman said to me, he says, I hope we're not maintaining the sidewalks over at Woodmont.
And will the trees be in good shape there? Those are private, those are privately owned, so we don't maintain the sidewalks in Woodmont, those are.
That's what I explained to him, but I want to hear it from our public works.
So, yeah, first of all, crystal clear, only sidewalks that would be maintained would be town-owned, not on private property.
What are those?
What are they specifically? You want me to name all of the areas? So there's a good portion of them all along, I actually just was working on that with G I S. There's a good portion of it over on exit five, those are all built over there, all right? Then we have Gilchrist Road.
Back up a little bit, exit five, where? Where is it?
So from Poor Boys Restaurant down to where the new Noria is, there's sidewalks on both sides of twenty-eight there. So those are in Lunen Derry on, they were, yeah.
Drive there all the time, I never noticed.
Yeah, no, and then it goes up, pardon my ignorance, I can't think of the name of the road.
I just know, because I got frustrated driving home yesterday when somebody wasn't on the sidewalk but was in the road.
Right.
Wearing black.
I see that on Mammoth Road, too.
Yeah, and then they go up Vista Ridge, there's a very small portion over a bridge on South Road, Gilchrist Road by the Holy Cross Cemetery. The majority of it is right here in town, as we all know, from the middle school down around to Moose Hill. And then there's the portion over by Shaw's and over in that area, then it goes up Winding Pond Road. So I believe all of it totals out to about one-point-eight miles. So that's what, that's what I did in my calc, but I'm going to have G I S kind of get that center line and add that all up.
So a question for you, Dave. Vista Ridge, isn't that private?
Not the portion that goes up it, no, but up in the back, there's a loop that is.
So you'd be just doing that portion?
Just the portion that's our right-of-way, correct.
And the other one that you mentioned over here by Benson's, isn't that private also?
No.
Century Village?
Winding Pond? No, we plow that. We just, in fact, paved a portion of it, too.
Do it seven times every day.
Now, to the plan itself, so, you know, this has been something that the town's been struggling with for decades now. So we now have an apparatus that we can put the type of equipment we need to on it. Now, you know that during this budget process, I requested to adding two additional positions, mainly to get the supervisors out of the large trucks, so that we have them in a supervisory role rather than actually plowing. So when we have a breakdown, we don't have our chief mechanic then off his route to go take care of a repair. So those two positions would support that effort, as well as allowing us to add on sidewalk maintenance. Now, we haven't moved forward with those two positions, so I'm in a little bit of a pickle here, because I won't have the employees to provide that level of service, but the two pieces of equipment are in this budget. So if we're not going to necessarily get the staffing we need, then we can't necessarily buy that equipment. Does that answer your question?
So, yeah, so it's telling me that if we don't put those positions in there, we don't need that equipment, and that equipment should come out of the budget.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure it out, Dave. I mean, I know our priority is to maintain our roads.
Correct.
And we only have so much personnel, we're short on personnel at times. When would these sidewalks be taken care of? Is it after the storm, days after the storm, or during the storm?
So.
I'm just trying to figure out how you're going to, how you're going to do this.
Yep. So I would do what I would call is, you know, have priority routes. So the priority routes would be those that are around a school district. So if we have kids that are walking, then that's the priority. So those would need to be done either at the very end of a storm, or certainly before the schools open. So if a storm ends on Friday night, we could come in Sunday night, make sure they're clear and open for Monday. The rest of that would be then done after the fact, when roadway networks are restored and whatnot, then we can go to those other out areas of town that we discussed, and then have those cleared.
All right, so you just said the school. Doesn't the school take care of the sidewalks now?
They do only in front of their property. So from the, from the high school, these traffic lights right here, down to the middle school, and a little bit up, I believe, up to the elementary school, but they do not go down around the corner to Moose Hill, which is where we hear the largest criticism and concerns.
But Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, they only use a snowblower there when they can, when they can get to it, right?
I don't want to speak too in-depth with what, how the school conducts their snow removal operation, but yeah, it's not done in, it's not, it's not.
Have equipment from the sidewalk.
It's not done in the fashion that I was just describing, where it's ready for school to be open. There's been days, in my experience here thus far, where the school district has been open, and the sidewalks are not cleared.
Correct.
Yeah, they don't have a sidewalk plow per se. They have a skid steer with a snowblower that blows it.
That is correct. They don't have the type of apparatus that we just invested in, which was part of a Warren article, and it's versatile, so we can use it for a multitude of things.
Are the sidewalks that are on a state road, are those our responsibility, or the state's?
So the state will usually build them with the town's understanding that they're going to maintain them, that they're going to provide a maintenance to them.
We just get to enjoy the launching of the snow from our giant plows onto our sidewalks.
Just like the crosswalks on there, they used to maintain?
Yeah, it is, it is exactly just that, Dan. They won't maintain them.
The difference is, is when they put those sidewalks in for the municipality, usually the municipality signs an agreement that they will maintain them all year round. So I don't know whether that was done, I've never seen any other way, so we probably agreed to do that, and we're not.
Dave, there's sidewalk in front of Crossroads Mall, did you list that sidewalk, or is that part of the private development of that Crossroads Mall?
So, that's a good question. That's all private lot and all state right-of-way there. I don't know who constructed them, it'd be something we'd have to look into.
A vague area there?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand, Dave, about, sorry.
That's all right, go ahead, Dave.
About maintaining these sidewalks, because, and I think you and I have had this discussion before, all right, why doesn't the property owner maintain it? And I know that, I've done work in Manchester for businesses that have sidewalks in front of their property, and they were told by the city, you must maintain it. So the sidewalk needed to be redone, we had to rip it out, had to redo it, they maintain it in the winter. Why don't we do that here?
So, various cities have different ways of doing things. I know that Derry, Manchester, Nashville, they all have a fleet of these vehicles that we have, and they go out and they clear the sidewalks. To what extent each municipality does that, I don't really know. It's a big thing in the inner, the larger cities like Boston and such like that, they have to maintain a shovel, I don't know about reconstructing them, but, but as far as winter maintenance and stuff like that, there's a variety of ways of doing them. But in New England, if you, in New Hampshire, especially if you have three-hundred feet of sidewalk in front of your house, I highly doubt you're going to go out and shovel three-hundred feet of sidewalk. And then if they don't, and then someone comes along, and that three-hundred-foot stretch isn't cleared, so the person steps off into the street, I mean, do we want to get into enforcing people, or forcing them to, you know, that expense on them to clear that sidewalk in front of their house? I guess that'd be a council's decision to do that.
Well, I think it also comes back to that the town owns the right-of-way of the first eight feet of, into the property, right?
It varies, but yeah, usually thirteen feet. We have a lot of our right-of-ways are fifty feet, so.
So we don't own it, it's a right-of-way to put snow and put signs. You've got to remember, when the plow truck piles that huge amount of snow on the sidewalk, that's very difficult to move. It's not like, if you get six feet of snow, you might have, you know, six inches of snow, you might have a three or four feet worth of banking, and you need heavy equipment to be able to move that out of the way, and that's why municipal, the cities and the larger places have sidewalk networks, they use sidewalk plows to be able to do that heavy lifting and push that out of the way, because it is heavy.
I got a question of Kelly.
Bring Kelly into this?
Yes, at the planning board end, okay, when somebody, and I've heard this before, people go up and say, you know, it'd be nice if we got sidewalks and stuff. If the planning board approves it with sidewalks, is there anything in there that says who's going to maintain those sidewalks? Or they just say, yep, we want this development, we want sidewalks?
I suppose it depends where it is.
Nice answer.
There's no, there's no formal agreement that the planning board would, would have in that instance.
I'm just looking like at Vista Ridge, all right? I mean, you drive up Vista Ridge Drive, I see there's a sidewalk on the right-hand side. Further up, you're saying the association owns that, those people up there. As that gets developed, you're going to have more businesses being built up there. I think you have stuff coming up there, Sean. So is there any way of addressing that? So is there any way of addressing that, who's gonna maintain that?
So in that instance, you're dealing with private roads, private sidewalks. If you're, if you're looking at a development where you're putting in a road and you want sidewalks, the question would be, is it a private road or is it going to become a town-owned road? And that's where you would have the conversation about maintenance and who's doing what.
Yeah, and then I think the, the bigger issue there is, so now a private developer puts in their sidewalk network and then they're maintaining it and it leads to and connects to a town sidewalk and we're not doing anything. So they're all walking through their subdivision and get to our sidewalk and it's covered in snow.
Because Vista Ridge is a town pro, town road.
The other aspect of the, the sidewalks is like, you can be like the Nevins where they ripped up all their sidewalks because they as a community decided that they didn't want that, so that happens too as well.
That's in private.
Yep.
Looking at sidewalks in a different perspective, not snow, but paving, do any of them need repair?
I mean, we haven't done a real formal analysis of all of them, but, uh, but most of them that I viewed are, appear to be in good condition still.
I mean, it helps that they're not getting the weight like a vehicle does, but eventually the land.
Nothing lasts forever.
Right, nothing lasts forever, but the land and the weather eventually get to them, so just curious if they needed any repair.
That's why asphalt sidewalks is the way to go, we wanna stay away from concrete. There's, you know, in certain areas that, that dictate they want concrete, like in downtown cities and things like that, but salt does not work well with concrete, so.
Yeah, it just cracks it horribly.
Yeah.
So, thank you. So at the end of the day, we have no real policy for who takes care of, how they're taking care of, what is side, you know, for the sidewalks in the snow, correct?
I think the, the policy has been, we don't do it. We don't provide winter maintenance.
But you, you're buying a machine and that's gonna do it, I mean, that's setting precedent, which is setting policy. So shouldn't we have the policy first, um, before we start spending money on people and machines to say, yes, we're gonna do this? So I came from Revere, pretty highly dense town, it used to be all farms and then it turned into the city that it is now. And, um, you are responsible for what's in front of your house. The town's only responsibility was to put it in. You were responsible for main, ma, maintaining it, if there was cracks or tree roots coming up, you were responsible for shoveling and mowing. And if somebody falls, it's not the town that's responsible, it's the owner of the house that's responsible. That's the way they do it in Revere, I'm willing to bet, most of the cities right outside of Boston. So as we grow and we build more of these things, we really need a clear, defined process as to our sidewalks. Who do they belong to, who is responsible? I can see the town paying to put them in, that's what the people wanted, but I don't believe it should be the town's responsibility to maintain them.
Yeah, I mean.
This is in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
I understand that, and I, my point being, the liability issues, now you're gonna start. Yeah, if you're putting in these insurance, uh, these, these sidewalks and you're responsible, your policy says you are responsible, there's a little cliff in the, the thing, I flip off my bike, I break my leg, you're responsible. I trip, I fall, I bruise my cheek, you're responsible. I slip, I fall, whatever, you're responsible. So we have to be clear as to who and what we're gonna, that's why there should be a, somewhat of a real policy put in place that says, this is what we're willing to do. And this way, when developers come in, they understand. Because even some of these private roads have turned public roads in the past, I've seen it. Then who's responsible? Now we're responsible for the things that they wanted, that they were taking care of, that now we're taking care of.
Can we go back to the budget?
Yeah, you're a little bit, you're a little late to the game because we have sidewalks that we own already in our public way and we are responsible for them, so let there be no question about that. So if we have an unsafe sidewalk, there's a statute that covers this in New Hampshire. If, it's called insufficiency. If it gets reported to us and we don't fix it, we're liable for it. So there's no question about that. You're already late to the game, we already have sidewalks, we have a sidewalk network, it's not huge, but we have it. We own it, we're responsible for maintaining it, we are not maintaining it. So it's already here.
Sean, I, I've got a question for you, because I've heard this on the council in the past, when they've discussed this, you know, the snow removal part of it. I've heard comments that if you maintain it, you're liable, if you don't touch it, you're not liable.
Not true.
No.
Can you please clarify that?
It's a statute, it's in, it's in chapter R C two thirty-one. It's, if we have an insufficiency, if, if there's a defect in the roadway or the sidewalk and we don't repair it and after we've been notified, we have a certain number of hours in which to do that, then we're, and if somebody gets hurt, we're negligent. That's why they have that statute. It's clear and unequivocal in New Hampshire, it is not Massachusetts.
So frankly, we've been lucky that no one's really gotten hurt on the sidewalk for the last fifteen, twenty years.
As he's indicated, I mean, the, you know, we don't have any known deficiencies in a particular sidewalk.
No, I meant, say if someone was out there in the snow and they got hurt.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the no obligation to plow snow on a, on a, on a sidewalk. In terms of, if there's a hole in the sidewalk or a crack, that, that's what we're liable for. We're not required to, to, if, as you indicated, the city of Manchester, they plow certain sidewalks and there's others they don't plow in the wintertime. So most of the year, people can use them, but they don't have enough equipment to do all that. Where I came from, same thing, there were sidewalks we didn't maintain. There were a certain number of sidewalks in the downtown areas that we maintained, the rest of them, we didn't, we didn't do anything with, we left them that way. Again, if there's a crack in there or, that's something that's gonna, someone's gonna trip on, we're liable for that, we gotta fix those. But other than that, we're not, we're not required to do, the only thing is, like I said, you have sidewalks that run along Route twenty-eight. When the state puts those in and the, the municipality wants those, generally the municipality agrees to do that and is responsible for the maintenance all year round, and it does say winter maintenance. Somebody probably signed a similar agreement, don't know that for sure, I haven't researched that, but I've never seen D O T do anything different. That's the only place you run a certain degree of risk. Because what's gonna happen there, the sidewalk is not plowed, so, like you indicated, people will walk in the street and they get hit, there's a potential liability there.
So when we were talking, Dave, I don't know if you did this already, you, you know, Dan brought up about the school, they got, they, they shovel it or something. Have we ever thought about, like, working with the school and doing it in the sense of either we just pay that guy to do that, or we say, we got the machine, you got the guy, can we have your guy use our machine and do that road? Because I'm just trying to figure out a way, like, listening to what Mr. Mulholland's saying, and if we're obligated to do this, I'm trying to figure out a plan for now.
No, it's an excellent question. Um, so from what I understand, I've had some of these discussions with the school district, really it's not their job to do it.
I understand, but it's our town.
But they did because it's their patrons, their students going, walking back and forth between those three schools. They have a piece of equipment that is really too large for a traditional sidewalk, but they took it out there and they do what they gotta do. And they do it only for their areas in front of their frontage. So essentially, they're doing exactly what you want them to do. They're, they're a property owner, they have sidewalk in front of their business or their, their home, and they're gonna, they're gonna do the best they can.
Correct.
Um, but they're really under no obligation to do that. But, and they don't exact, they don't have the type of equipment that would work on all the other sidewalks that I just described. The machine that they have is not designed for that.
But what I was saying is, what if we got the machine and they donated the person? If they had the person that could.
Well, I, I think the school.
Like, you know what I mean? So they're not using that little mach, like you said, the machine was too small and continued that pathway. But again, I don't wanna go off on this because I'll get in trouble that I'm not doing the budget, so.
I think the problem there is, you're co-mingling then people and staff and expenses and as well, people fall under different liabilities with insurances and we can't mix like that.
I, I just see it as, as a, a very important task that I think we've, we've, pardon the pun, kicked the can down the road a little bit too long, in my opinion. Uh, we know through the master plan and, and questions, we're hearing it all the time. It was one of the, in the first six months I was here, I fielded a, a bazillion calls about that. You're gonna finally do something about sidewalks and whatnot. Um, I think we're gearing up and getting ourselves in a position to do that. We do have a piece of equipment that is now versatile enough that we could add those two components to it. And if we are given the people and the equipment, yeah, it'll be time to write a policy. But we can't put a policy in place and then say, well, we've got this policy for our sidewalks, but we don't have the equipment and manpower to do it. But I do understand the importance of having a policy, that'll absolutely be incorporated right into our winter operations plan, moving forward.
So Dave, what's the cost of that equipment?
Um, if I didn't break it out in the budget, I believe, uh, the blower was twenty-three thousand and the, um, sorry, I don't have anything in front of me, do you have it?
Yeah, I do. The sidewalk plow is seven thousand nine hundred and five, and the sidewalk snow blower is eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
So the two of them were about?
So the two of them are about, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? All right, what I'll do is I'll go department by department, see if anyone has any questions. What about solid waste and sewer? Any questions?
I think they're pretty much covered on our user fees, so I don't think there's really much that we can hit there.
Dan has a question.
Of course, on solid waste and, um, solid waste is the one I'm concerned about with the drop-off center. Have we looked at another option? Um, I know Auburn has waste management over there. I've had somebody say to me, why don't we just bring our stuff to waste management in Auburn? Then we wouldn't have to man that down there. Is that something that we've looked at?
We have.
Doable, not doable, tell me.
Bob Carey, environmental engineer, we have inquired, um, with our current waste management company if there would be any possibility of going over to Auburn. Um, there's a, there's a lot of complications. Uh, first of all, some of the material that we would wanna bring over there, they don't take, at least that's what they told me. The metals wouldn't be separated, there's a number of things. There, there, the way that their layout is, having residents go over there and unload a vehicle, a pickup truck or something, would stop up the works. As far as, they are moving major dump trucks and, and equipment with tons and tons of material. The last thing they want is to be held up in their schedules by residents going over there, not quite knowing where it should go and taking up a lot of time where they've got trucks stacked up behind them. So that's, that's the things we have run into with trying to, let's say, offload it to, to another facility. There's also been talk about trying to run in the winter, our, our drop-off center in the winter.
That'll be the next question.
We, we can, I mean, just to recap on that, uh, we've, we've looked at that. And conservatively, if we ran those twenty or twenty-two weeks, you could count on the operation budget quadrupling with the, with the complications we would have. The roads would have to be, the road in would have to be plowed every day. It's not gonna be our town's forces doing that because they're gonna be busy doing the roads that they have to. The capital costs, we'd need bathrooms, we'd need real honest-to-god shelter, we would need cantilever covers over all of the different containers to keep the materials out. The concrete floors down there would, if we had to treat them with salt, that would begin to deteriorate the concrete bases that we have that have lasted now for close to fourteen years with an area cracking them. So when you add it all up, it's just, is not practical at that site to do that. It's a tremendously efficient three-season facility, tremendously efficient. But if you try to throw that extra season in there, it's just not gonna work. So we have done some evaluations, we, we are constantly looking, but right now, that's pretty much what we have.
Would it be worth, Bob, to have the discussion with waste management that possibly in the wintertime, limited deliveries to Auburn, um, for people? I'm not saying brush, I'm not saying trees or metal, but, uh, somebody might have, you know, mattress box spring or, you know, just junk that they've collected, couches, is that something that maybe they, they would entertain?
We, we could, we could further inquire, but based on the answers I've already gotten as far as what I just said, as far as just this, the extra people that would be going in there, kind of disrupting their ar, our, our operation already. Um, having to set aside certain areas for materials, it's just, it's just probably not gonna happen.
Yeah, Derry allows us to bring stuff over.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Ron. Derry will allow out-of-towners, however, they are, they restrict no mattresses.
Right.
But they have a, a unit, uh, price structure, which is several cents more per ton, I think, for non-residents versus that. Absolutely no mattresses, they barely can take care of the ones they get from their residents. And obviously no trash and recycling because they can't charge that for, you know, if, anyone for that and that would just be an unfair burden on their taxpayers.
They do take air conditioners, which is helpful.
Yes, yes, they do. Yes, they do, which is a godsend.
Because we don't take air conditioners.
No, we're not set up to handle the freon containment devices.
Any other? I just wanted to add in here while he's up here, uh, this Saturday is the last day for, uh, the collection center to be open out on West Road, and as well, this Saturday is the, uh, Household Waste Day at Nelson Road.
Household Hazard.
Household Hazard Waste Day, thank you, at Nelson Road.
Key word. Um, and that'll be open from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty at the Laffa Fields. And we ask you two things, do not bring water-based, water-soluble paint because that is inert and it can be basically dried out and put right into the trash dry. And motor oil is a new thing this year also. Uh, we don't have the little, uh, drop-off center behind the fire station operating anymore. And, uh, so we do have alternatives where the, um, residents can bring it to, um, several locations, several auto parts locations down on, um, Route one oh two, uh, for, uh, any time that they're open. They can bring it down there, so that's what we're asking them to do. If it is contaminated with water or gasoline, something like that, definitely bring it to the household waste event. But please don't show up with something and say, oh yeah, it's, it's, it's contaminated, yep, and the caps are still on it. Okay, please don't do that.
So Bob, in, in your budget, you talked about the waste oil collection behind the fire station, that facility, do you have anything in your budget to address that, are we, are we taking that down? What are we doing with it?
Looks at this point like the fire department is gonna work with us to, to take it down and they're gonna use that space for additional training apparatus and facilities.
Any cost for removing that, for taking that down, do you know?
I'm not aware right now, I think it's, 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 I'm not sure which budget that would come out of. It's not gonna be big money to do that. Main thing we gotta do is, is get the tanks cleaned out, uh, and then they can be taken away as scrap metal.
Yep.
And then from there, it is, it will be sunsetted, the building will be sunsetted.
Thank you. Any other questions, Bob? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions on the legal department?
Just, uh, Sean, can you go over the seventy-five thousand dollar increase again, uh, for the legal line?
It's just based on what the usage has been. If you look at the pattern there, legal costs aren't going down in terms of their rates. We're actually paying a substandard rate right now. Their normal rate's like four hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour, paying two ninety. I'm sure that's gonna last forever. And it's, it's an unpredictable thing because I don't know what's gonna come up. We've got a flurry of cases that just came in recently. You know, what that's gonna equate to, I don't know.
Any other legal questions?
I guess I'll just add to that, you know, with that legal line, I think that underlines the importance of not taking on frivolous lawsuits or other legal measures that are outside the bounds of, of things that we really shouldn't be playing with. We've gotta be very careful with that line.
Very strategic.
Yep.
Any questions about general assistance? See none? Uh, any questions on conservation? See none? Any questions on the town council budget?
I know you had an increase due to printing costs, but will we bring that maybe back down again? So maybe thinking about if we could maybe move to stuff on just the computers or tablets or a way to reduce costs?
She'll explain the reason why that was shifted over there, but you know, my plan is to go paperless.
Right.
That entire printing line for town council is for legal notices being printed in the newspaper, uh, which is still required by statute, so we can't, for public hearings. So, um, it's specifically specifies a newspaper, so that is what that entire line is. That is the, we figured a budget of approximate, let me pull up, I can actually get you the exact number.
Well, she's looking that up, like I said, my plan is to go paperless because.
I'm only, I'm already helping you, so.
I know you were, you're doing a fine job there. But in terms of the amount of paper that we purchase and printing, uh, with photocopiers and all that is, and it's, it's two thousand, almost two thousand twenty-six, and we're still acting like we're nineteen eighty-two.
Exactly.
We've got to turn this ship around in a direction that is far more efficient. Because this little piece of paper, you can't see it from over there, but if I have an electronic folder, you can pick it up anytime you want, you can search it, you can do all of those things with it, you can't do that with this.
Do we have a estimated cost of them, what we spend on printing and paper and accessories for that?
We will, because I'll be showing you the value of going paperless once I do that and I'll show you the, the dollar amount that's been saved and the inefficiency of the papyrus as the Romans used to refer to it as.
I feel like you guys are already doing that already, aren't you?
Yes.
We never, we never got the binder.
Spoiler alert, you won't for deliberative either.
That's okay.
Legal notices, we budgeted, um, a hundred and sixty dollars per town council meeting for twenty-four town council meetings in the year. So that's the budget allows for one legal notice for every town council meeting for the year.
Gotcha, okay.
You don't necessarily spend that.
Not always, but in case we did, it's better to go over, you know, obviously we only do it.
You don't understand that you're not running a legal notice every single week.
No, but, um, more, three-quarters of them, right?
Well, also the, when we post the warrant, that takes a significant chunk where it's probably about equal to, what, I'd say probably about ten, eight or ten of those, so, because that's almost a full page.
You post it just in for a public hearing as well?
Public hearings have to be posted as well.
Are we legally required to post the warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on town council? All right, cultural affairs, any questions? All right, see none? Uh, information technology?
I have one.
So in the management service line, I noticed that in twenty twenty-six, it was three thirty-nine, and twenty twenty-seven, the departmental budget is six thirty, which is a pretty big increase. Is that the increase for Open Gov? And that's the difference between that, or is it the forty-four thousand? This is on page forty of the budget book.
So the biggest changes in IT are, there was a couple of changes. One is software and one is salaries.
Okay.
Remember, because we don't.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a software because I'm the, we basically doubled from default from one year to the next. And I thought the default budget was only things we had a contract for, so are those just contractual?
It is.
Okay.
So I've entered into those contracts.
Okay.
And the purpose of those is both those programs, remember, one is paid for by building permit fees.
Yep.
And the other is gonna be paid for by grant in terms of the.
Got it, that's right, okay, that's where that clarification was, okay, thank you.
There were also several large contractual up, contractual increases. For example, our server maintenance, the, the way they calculate our server fees were increased significantly. And that's a cost that at this point in time, we can't get around.
Okay.
But as we continue to innovate, digitize, and move towards cloud-based services, those server fees will be reduced too.
Okay, great.
Ideally, I want it to disappear, I don't want us to be in the business of trying to maintain service. You may not, may or may not know, but there's a lot of maintenance in terms of security and patches and all that.
Yes.
And it's better to let people who do that, do that better than us, let them do it instead of us.
It's also very like electric-heavy too, with like, and you've got to cool the rooms and things like that, yeah.
It's generated, yep.
Yep.
And I'm guessing that ours probably don't have a Halon system, I don't know, I haven't been in there. But they probably don't have a Halon system that if the sprinkler goes off, it's gone.
Oh, because we would need.
Halon system.
Yes, that's, that's the powder, right?
Well, it's actually a gas.
Gas, okay, all right. I was like, I just knew it wasn't water.
So that, that forty-four thousand is the amount that's being requested above default.
Okay.
And that is, so they're not contractually obligated items, they are, he's looking to increase different security licenses.
Right, okay, great.
Expand it to different people and different departments. Right now, the main ones have it, such as finance, HR. So he's looking to expand it further and allow for more security in that way. But because we don't have it under contract right now, it's not default.
Okay, great, that makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Good.
Very quick, just rewinding a bit. Regarding the legal, Mr. Town Manager, basically what I understand is, you can't, obviously, you can't predict what the amount will be, there's effectively no cap on it. Is it at all realistic, or have we considered municipal liability insurance that includes an obligation to pay for legal services? We don't, we don't have that in, in the public sector. So that would cover you, you mean to, so let me, actually, I should back up. If someone files a lawsuit against us, human rights complaint, something of that nature, we are covered by insurance for that. We have some security coverage, we have those sorts of things. Like, for instance, we have a breach going on right now. And we've hired, the, Primex has hired a law firm to represent us on that. So in that particular case, they're paying that up to fifty thousand dollars. Primex covers that, our insurance and the third-party insurance kicks in to pay that. So we have a firm that's actually dealing with that right now. Yeah, I'm talking more, if we were to get sued because someone slips on a sidewalk. Right. Is there, you know, is there any form of municipal liability insurance that would cover us above a certain cap, let's say? Well, we already have that, so Primex, they provide that. So they would have an attorney that would represent us in that case. Okay, gotcha, I was looking through the budget, I couldn't see something that obviously jumped out at me, but we already have it. It's a liability insurance line?
So, yeah, if you look at the insurance, it's, it's part of the property insurance. It's property liability, all that fun.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee? All right, I was asked to give you guys two minutes to escort, no. Joseph had said that you guys might be having a meeting or.
Well, we will be, just continuing in.
He just asked for two minutes of you guys to, but thank you guys for this evening. Almost.
Good questions, Kate.
They're having a meeting.
Got it? Don't forget.
I will accept the motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Motion from Sean, second from Ted, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Liaison reports.
All my liaisons went on today, so, and I was here, not there.
As a Budget Committee liaison, they had a very good meeting today with the town council.
Excellent. And you're missing what they're doing right now. I don't think I have anything right now. Okay, Dan, you're good, all right. Town manager report.
So RFQ for legal services, I sent you a draft of that and a schedule of that. I'm just looking for some feedback, do you want me to execute that? Do you want to make changes with that? What would you, how would you like me to proceed at this point?
Okay, did you repeat that?
So the RFQ, I sent you a draft of that and the schedule of that, so I'm looking for your feedback. Do you want me to execute that, move forward that? Do you want to make changes to it? What would you prefer that I do?
When was that sent?
Last week. Oh, no, is it? Yeah, it was last week.
I didn't see it.
I didn't get it.
I don't think I got it either.
I got it.
I didn't see it.
I saw it, counselor.
I swear to God, I didn't see it.
So let's do this, let's.
Let's take a look at it.
Let's talk about that at next meeting, okay? That way, we can all look at it.
I don't think there's any particular hurry, I mean.
Yeah, fair enough, we'll just all look at it and talk about it next meeting.
It's a good thing to bring up because we all would be like.
We said on Thursday, last Thursday.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Oh, yes. So the discussion, alternative infrastructure funding discussion, someone referred to it as impact fees, but they're more than just impact fees. Per the share, that has been assigned to February second is when that discussion will occur. And then the other item I have, I had a discussion with the tax collector, so a bit of good news, it doesn't appear that there will be any, right now at least, it doesn't appear we're gonna have anything to tax deed this year. People are, again, paying their taxes or have made arrangements in terms of payment agreements, so it doesn't look like we're gonna have anything for you, which is good news, I would suggest to you.
That's a shocker.
Yeah, so ending on a good note there, that's all I have for you folks.
Ron, I had a, an item to add for liaison reports. This Thursday, we have another meeting for the new SAU building that the town will be looking to build, and will be, hopefully, be reviewing the fifty percent design estimate at that time. So we have that this Thursday. Any other questions, Mr. Mahalan? All right, Ms. Karen.
None this evening, Mr..
Okay. I'll have a public comment. Come on up, sir.
Apologies, I look like this. Good evening, how are you doing?
Good evening, Jeff Penta, Thirty Holstein Ave, Vice Chair of the Planning Board, Chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee, Chair, members of the council. You know, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. A question that continues to surface from residents, and it's really timely with, as we look at the, of the future of the planning board, is why doesn't the planning board simply restrict the size of development? It's an understandable concern, I get it. But the answer requires clarity about both state law and the role of the plan, the planning board is required to play. Under New Hampshire law, particularly RSA six seventy-four and RSA six seventy-six, the planning board functions in a quasi-judicial capacity when reviewing application. What that means is that we are not acting as policymakers in those moments. We are acting as adjudicators. Our responsibility is to apply the zoning ordinance and regulations as written fairly, objectively, and consistently, exactly the way a court would apply statute. As a quasi-judicial body, we cannot impose new conditions that are not supported by existing regulations, deny a project that meets all the applicable requirements, reduce the size or scale of a development because we believe it's too big, or make decisions based on personal preference, popularity, or political pressure. Doing so would violate RSA six seventy-six semicolon four and exceed the authority granted to us under state law and expose the town to legal and financial liability. This is not a matter of opinion, it's a matter of law. New Hampshire is a Dillon's rule state, meaning municipalities have only the powers expressly granted by the legislature. Local boards cannot create new authority on the fly. This also means that property owners have guaranteed rights under state law, rights that the town cannot take away unless the zoning ordinance clearly allows it. For example, if a parcel is zoned for commercial use and the proposed development meets all requirements in the ordinance, such as setbacks, height density, height density and traffic standards, the property owner has the legal right to build using that use. The planning board cannot arbitrarily shrink the project, change the use, or deny it simply because the public feels it's too large. Doing so would violate the landowner's rights, conflict with RSA six seventy-four and RSA six seventy-six, and expose the town to significant legal risk. Where the town does possess true decision-making power is not during an individual application review, but instead in establishing the policy framework, zoning ordinance and land use regulations that govern those applications. And that is where the master plan authorized under RSA six seventy-four semicolon one dash four becomes essential. The master plan is the community's long-range vision for Londonderry's future, its land use, housing, transportation, open space, economic development, and community character. It provides the legal and policy foundation for zoning amendments adopted under RSA six seventy-four semicolon sixteen slash seventeen, and regulatory updates adopted under RSA six seventy-five. When the planning, when the master plan is strong, current, and community-driven, it empowers a town to adopt zoning standards that can address development size, density, height, intensity, buffers, impacts, and design. Without such a foundation, zoning becomes reactive, inconsistent, disconnected from what residents want. And I just want to say, it's been an honor to being the Chair of that committee and working with such awesome and excellent committee members and community. So when the public asks why the planning board can't just say no, the answer is really simple. Because state law requires us to apply the rules as they exist, not as we might wish they were. If the community wants different outcomes, those outcomes must be achieved through thoughtful planning and legally-supported zoning amendments, beginning with a clear master plan. The master plan is not, is not just guidance, it is the statutory roadmap that allows Londonderry to proactively shape development in a way that aligns with state law and community goals. Closing, and thank you for the extra time if I went over. I want to thank the council for supporting this work. Together as a council, as a planning board, and as a community, we can ensure that Londonderry grows in a way that is thoughtful, transparent, and grounded in both statute and shared vision. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? See none, I will close public comment. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second from Sean, second from Ted, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you.